I'd like to call the order, please. Town of Winslow, Maine, town council meeting, Monday, February 8th at 6:00 PM. Lisa, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, you can. Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Queerian.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Here. Could we all rise, please, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all. Can I have a motion, please, of the minutes of the previous meeting? Second. Lisa, can I have a roll call, please?
You can. Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Queerian. Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
And before we go forward, who was the first and the second?
I was the—
Jerry Queerian was the first, and Peter Drappo was the second.
Thank you.
Under Communications, a letter from Mark and Leon Robey concerning organic farm to include medical marijuana. We'll be discussing this, too, under the discussion items. Erica, do you have anything you want to add to the first, under the communications, from Mark and Leon?
No. However, Mark is here, attending the meeting with us. If you all have any questions you would like to ask him after the reading of his letter.
Yep. And I'll read it now. Dear Winslow Council, we are writing this letter to ask you for your help. I, Mark Robey, have moved back to Winslow after many years in an effort to reestablish the old Cushman Farm. My son Leon has joined me. I am residing at the farmhouse at 265 Cushman Road, and my son is in the barn apartment at 265. We represent the sixth and seventh generation of our family to reside here on the Cushman Farm. Our goal is to build a diversified, sustainable, organic farm. We plan to cultivate vegetables, boma wild mushrooms, and medical marijuana. We want to be sure everything we do is done properly. Our intention is that what we do here will have a positive impact on our community in Winslow's future. As you all are aware, medical cannabis is rapidly growing an evolving industry in Maine. We are confident in our evaluation of this venture that included a medical cultivation facility would greatly increase the chances of being a viable business opportunity. Farming, especially on a small scale, is more a labor of love than a profitable enterprise. We understand that the Winslow current medical marijuana ordinance was quickly created to establish rules before the passing of a deadline that have resulted in the town having nothing in place. The ordinance, presently written, states that any medical marijuana caregiver cultivation facility, as well as any other medical marijuana establishment, is presently limited to only mixed-use zone property. We are only interested in cultivation, not a storefront, manufacturing, testing, or extraction facility. Unfortunately for us, our farm is located on land zone low-density residential. This is property adjacent to our western side that was recently rezoned for mixed use. Our farmland is located on over 40 acres on the west side of the Cushman Road, tax map 1 lot 122. Code enforcement officer, Mr. Bradstreet, has informed us that a variance is not an option, so we are searching for alternative solutions. He further recommended that we write you this letter to see what the town council might be able to do or consider doing to help us be successful in our endeavor to start a business. We understand that an exception could be made because of our unique situation, or maybe the council could consider amending the ordinance or informing us of some other solution we are not currently aware of. We hope that is the case. I, Mark, was told that it was my great-grandfather's dream that one of his greatest grandsons would— one of his great-grandsons would choose to continue to farm this land, as it has been since the early 1800s. He passed away in 1954, the year before I was born. In about 1980, his daughter Catherine Cushman Douglas, my grandmother, passed along to me as sealed envelope from him to the first man in the family to take over the farm. And in it included his recipe for smoking hams and baking. Going through the attic here, I have found family letters from the Civil War and records from the years before that as well. Farm receipts show that my ancestors provided agricultural goods to families in both Winslow and Waterville. That is a piece of our family history that we would love to recreate. And we more than appreciate any support and actions you could take to make this venture successful. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Mark Robey and Leon Robey. And like I said, we have another discussion further on in the program to discuss that. The MDOT Letter Concerning Fish Bridge Over Winslow Stream. Erica, would you like to comment on that one, please?
Sorry about that.
Erica, are you still there?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to pull my copy of the letter. We do have an online public meeting. They're conducting all of their meetings online. They were letting you all and myself know about the public meeting that they were conducting. This is about the replacement of the fish bridge over Winslow Stream. So basically, they just want everybody to be aware of what's going on with their timeline, their project, and allow everybody time for comment.
Yeah, it is— Erica, it's a very short letter, so I can read it. It's addressed to Lisa Gilliam, town clerk on Benton Avenue, Winslow Fish Bridge number 0509. Dear Mrs. Gilliam, the Department of Transportation is conducting an on-demand public meeting for the proposed replacement of Fish Bridge over Winslow Stream, located a mile southwest of the Benton Town Line. A link to this and other readings can be seen at any time at www-main.gov. The on-demand meeting will consist of videos and additional information describing the proposed project. Comments and other input will be accepted through the website beginning January 13th until January 27, 2001, or by contacting me at area code 207-215-3820. And there's also an email here. Can we put that on the website so people could email at this time?
Could you repeat that?
Yes, I can do that tomorrow, Ray.
Okay.
The phone number.
And could you, Lisa, at the same time, email me, email the councilors? They have a copy in their package, so you ought to be able to find it in your package and then be able to get the information. But if we post it online, at least citizens— And just to clarify, that bridge, I believe, is on the Garland Road?
I think that's what I was going to ask.
That's the Fish Bridge. It's a mile—
It's the town line.
Yep. So it's a very narrow bridge, so, you know, for people that live out there, depending on if you're coming from Benton or Winslow, you want to know ahead of time what's going on. I don't think they're going to be able—and I don't know. We have to look at the thing on the bridge, so— Any other questions? Third on the communications is Winslow, police captain vacancy. And we all got a department—we got a memo from Erica concerning that. And Erica, do you want to go over just the highlights of what the intentions are down at the police station?
Sure. As you all know at this point, Captain Haley Fleming has accepted a position with the State Police Department, which is a very good thing for him. It's a prestigious organization, one of the hardest organizations to get into in the country as far as state police organizations. The filling of this vacancy has caused the chief and I to kind of look over what we need to do down there to best move the department forward. There are two possibilities. The one was moving forward with just filling the captain and moving on as-is. The other was to revisit the lieutenant position, which is also still an existing administrative position down there. And as we toss this idea back and forth, we felt that it was best to move forward with the lieutenant rather than the captain. That was due to several— several things led us to that determination. I kind of would like to have Chief McDade comment on those more closely, but I'll give you the highlights, and then perhaps Chief can weigh in on that as well. We are not confident that we have the level of tenure and experience required within our immediate group to be able to move on to a captain position. If we were to hire a captain, we would likely have to go outside the organization, and that's probably not going to be a great thing for our people here within the department. We would like to be able to promote our own people and to grow them for a lot of different reasons, but one of the biggest is that we need to cultivate that sense of loyalty and trust that comes within a brotherhood such as the police department. And we feel that being able to promote within will be a lot better for that. Another factor was the budget. If we hire a captain, that's going to probably come at a fairly high cost budget-wise. The union base pay for a lieutenant is only $50,762 a year, but the average captain pay in the region, which would be a negotiation upon coming in, is $64,584. And statewide, the average is $77,667. If we go for a captain from outside, it's probably going to be someone with a fair amount of experience and years on the job, which means they're probably going to be fairly advanced in their pay already. So budget-wise, lieutenant position is more effective. We also were looking to get some staffing flexibility. Right now, we don't have good coverage on holidays. We only have one person when we really should have two people at all times. The lieutenant position allows us to do that where the captain position does not, because it's 100% administrative and is a standard Monday-through-Friday-type position. So the lieutenant gives us a little bit more flexibility to operate in a kind of 50% administrative, 50% patrol type of operation. The department would still use that person as the chief of operations whenever the chief could not be there, for example, if he's on vacation, or if he is otherwise unable to perform his duties for a short period of time due to illness or absence. And last, and most importantly in my view, is that filling a lieutenant position allows us to create upward movement in the department for two of our people, not just one. It would allow us to move one person from sergeant to lieutenant and another person from patrolman up to sergeant. Those positions, especially in a department as small as ours, those are hard to come by. And in a time when police agencies all around the state and actually all around the country are basically taking from each other when these positions come open, it's really good to be able to give that upward momentum to these folks who have given their time here and have dedicated their time to us when they're available. Otherwise, we stand to lose them to somewhere else that can offer them that upward opportunity. So that was the basics that the chief and I have decided to move forward with lieutenant. We wanted to make sure that you all were aware of our decision. It is a personnel decision, but, you know, so it falls in my bailiwick, but at the same time, we wanted you all to be aware of where we were going and what our vision for the department was. Chief, if you would, please weigh in on the finer points of how a lieutenant position is going to be more beneficial to you. I appreciate that.
Yes, and I think the town manager covered it very, very clearly. The only I would add is, Mr. Merrill, what she's saying is that—
Chief, could you speak up or get a little closer to the microphone? We can just barely hear you.
Yep, I don't— do I have to turn my speaker up? You can hear me better now.
Better.
Better?
Yep, it's better.
Okay. I agree with— just to add on to what Erica had said, the biggest—one of the biggest things is we're just trying to make—I'm trying to make this police department more efficient, and I really didn't feel that we needed two full-time administrative positions when we could better utilize the people on the road, the person on the road. The biggest weak spot I have in the schedule, as the town manager had spoke about, was on holidays and weekends. And this would help with holidays, and we're still working on a solution for weekends. But I really think it would do a lot for morale, but also it would do a lot to make us more efficient. I've spent some time this week also. We write through some of the job descriptions. The ones I looked at were very unclear. They didn't really specify specifically what people were supposed to be doing more as just a generic-type thing that someone had taken from another police department that really didn't completely address what needs to be done for the needs of Winslow. So we're looking at that also. So it's going to be a long hiring process. The person that gets in this position will really want to be in this position and fully understand what their job description is and what we expect from them, so we can make it more efficient. Any questions or concerns from anybody?
No, I don't think we have any questions at present. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you, Erica. Moving on into communications, just—we all received in our package an updated roster of town board and committee members. If there are any errors that you see, please email Lisa Gilliam with any omissions or any errors that you guys find in the thing.
Ray, I think we missed one. The Agricultural Commission Newsletter.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Yep. The Agricultural Commission Newsletter. I think that— yep. Some of the highlights that I see on that is— anybody here from the Agricultural Committee that would like to comment?
Let me find the paper here.
You need a copy?
Yeah, this is Kate Newport.
Yep, hey, Kate.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Judy for her great first newsletter. And our intention is to continue to do these newsletters to keep the stakeholders involved in what we're doing at the town level, so— But thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
I see we have a discussion later on in the— during the discussion item portion of the meeting on the town force ordinance. Kate, you're going to stay around for that?
I will, yes. That's why I'm on here.
Okay, I figured that. Okay. Thank you, Kate. Yep.
You're welcome.
And then again, updated roster of town board and committee members. If you see any mistakes, please just email Lisa with any omissions or any changes that you see. Moving on to board and committee appointments, the Agricultural Committee. This is just, I think, a logistic change, is that currently Steve Russell is a member as a counselor, and Joseph Gravel is just a member. Now Steve Russell will be a member, and Joseph Gravel will be a member as a counselor. I don't think we have to approve, but we can approve it?
I think we do have to approve it.
We do have to approve that?
We did all the time.
Okay. So there's the changes.
Kerry was first, who was second?
Yep. And you have a roll call, Lisa?
You can. Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Queerian.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Yes. Looking at the next item, Cemetery Committee. Steve Russell as a member. I don't believe that we're ready to close out the applications for that process. Amanda, could you comment on that, or?
We did post it in the paper and on the Facebook page that had open positions, but I—as you can see, I just placed out as a reminder to you guys that we won't apply. There's currently no one filling the roles, so there's plenty of roles for people to fill. So I guess I will leave that to your guys' discretion if you want to leave it open. The Parks and Rec Board position has been open for a while, so again, I would leave that up to you guys.
Yep.
What you want to do.
Yep. I think the Cemetery Committee—I think, since there's so many, if we can appoint Steve today, if the council wishes to do so—how many people total are on that board, would be on that board, Amanda?
I'd have to look it up. I believe it's five, plus myself, because I'm non-voting.
Yep. I think we should wait till we get all the applications in and then appoint—
I'd make a motion, we wait till next month.
We wait till next month, so, you know—
Do you table it?
Yep. So we'll table that for now until next month. And again, if anybody's interested in the Cemetery Committee, please contact Amanda or the town office for an application for being on the Cemetery Committee. Park and Rec Board, Steve Russell as a member.
Second.
So moved by Jeff, seconded by Lee. Can I have a roll call vote? Steve Russell as a member of Park and Rec?
Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Queerian.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Yes. And Zoning Board of Appeals?
Don't move. Second.
Adam, has this been open for a while, and did we get a variety of applications, or is it just a recent vacancy?
This has been vacant since I've worked here. And I have not seen any applications.
Okay. Sounds good. Do we have a motion, a first and a second?
Yep.
Okay. Jeff was the first, Jerry was the second, or Lee was the second. Can I have a roll call vote, please, on Zoning Board of Appeals for Steve Russell as a member?
Yes. Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Queerian. Jeff West.
Yes.
Lee Trahan.
Yes.
Peter Drappo.
Yes.
Joseph Gravel.
Yes.
And Ray Karen.
Yes. Moving on to reports of committees and commissions. We'll go through—we'll have Erica, town manager, report, please.
Yes, sir. Of note, for the month of January, we have come to an agreement on 2,000— I'm sorry, $2,005,500 in property sales and collected $52,620 in vehicle sales. All of that is unanticipated revenue. It will be used to offset capital expenses, in some cases replenish the funds from the departments that the vehicles came from. When it comes to—I'm specifically talking about parks there, the sale of her truck, we've had some unexpected repairs, a bad transmission, so that's going to offset that expense. So that's really good we could get that done. And we've also been able to, hopefully—my proposal to you all during budget is going to be that we use some of that money to replenish fund balance. Budget preparation, we've been working on that pretty diligently with the department heads. I appreciate all their help on getting this first one done. Being my very first budget, it's been really difficult to get on top of everything that's going on, just because I don't know your organization as well as most of the time when I do a budget, I've had quite a bit of time working with an agency, and this is all new to me. So I really want to thank the department heads for all their help. So the budget was a couple of days late. I got it over to our finance and HR director on the 29th, but that only gave her till Monday—that was a Friday—that gave her till Monday to get it totally compiled and out to all of you, and we didn't make that. We made it on the 4th, but it has been done, and we'll be starting up with budget workshops on February 16th. That first one will be assessing code enforcement, general assistance, administration, and elections. And then we'll continue on from there. All of those will be presented via Zoom, and the public will have the opportunity to comment on those budgets ahead of time. We are putting them up on the website and on Facebook and soliciting input from the public ahead of time before those even come up for discussion. So hopefully, we'll be gathering comments and questions, clarifications, before we even get to that first meeting on the 16th. And as we get those, we'll forward them on to all of you in the council. I do want to give a shout-out to the front staff. We do remain close to the public. Front staff, though, has been doing a bang-up job, serving everybody. They go out to the parking lot, they get everyone taken care of. Nobody has been turned away because we can't come into the building. We've been able to get everything done, and they've done a great job. We've even had a couple of people call and post on Facebook how easy the process has been. So that's all thanks to them and how well they've done. Again, Captain Haley Fleming has announced his departure from the Winslow Police Department effective February 26th to take a position with the Maine State Police. And as I noted before, this is one of the most difficult agencies to get into in the country. I know that from my years in law enforcement outside of the state of Maine. And every time state of Maine police came up, it was always noted what a difficult place this is to get into. So congratulations to him. I think it's a really good reflection, not only on himself, but also on the preparation that his 13 years in this department have given him. So I want to congratulate Captain Fleming and wish him all the best and continued success in his career. Just quickly recapping our property sales. 55 Ellis Road, we have had a couple of contracts that didn't go through, but it is now under contract for $65,000 and should close by the end of this month. 79 Clinton Avenue, we have not had any action on, but we believe that's because it's just the wrong season at this time. That property is probably going to be most attractive to someone who wants to flip it, and that would be activity that probably picks up in the spring. Not a great time right now, so we're just going to be a little patient on that one. South Reynolds Road, Lot 3H, this was one that Mike Hevner had had up for sale for quite a while previously before he left last spring. It had three deals fall through because of complications with the property itself, which made it most attractive to him and a butter. So Mark and Terry Sawyer are the abutting property owners, and they actually just completed their purchase of that property today. So got another one off the books and into somebody's hands that can actually make good use of it. Then the biggest one, obviously, is the Orion Rope Works Building. We're very happy that we've got a signed purchase and sale agreement for $2 million on that building. You all voted to accept that offer at the special meeting on January 20th. They have a 60-day inspection period. They're also in discussions right now with Johnny Seeds to work out something on the warehousing space and not removing the connector between the two buildings, which is—eventually that's going to be an expense that we have to bear in combination with Johnny's, because it's part of the sale when we originally sold that front half of the building to Johnny's. But for right now, they're negotiating that, so that's a positive development. On the sale of the vehicles, we were able to sell the ladder truck. It went to Wesfield— Maze Field, West Virginia for $51,600. They were very happy to get it. They're a small volunteer fire department, so it's—they were very excited to come up here. They were up here within a couple of days to pick it up. As I stated, the Parks Department F-150 was purchased locally for $1,020, and that's going to be able to offset that transmission replacement we had to do. The rescue vehicle did not make reserve, and we are not going to go through with the sale at this time. None of the—none of the offers—the highest offer was not acceptable to us, so we're going to hold on to that one for a couple more months and try bidding it out again in the spring. Update on projects, Chaffee Brook Pump Station, the permitting is ongoing. This is—you know, we've got a ways to go on this project. We're still in the beginning phases with all the permitting. We did have an order on the environmental study that—or I'm sorry, the archaeological study, that we were going to have to do a phase two. That is actually going to be able to be avoided. The state is accepting a letter for us that we are basically going to— we are basically going to ordnance the area that was the point of interest for the archaeological artifacts that were found, and we're going to be able to continue work as long as we don't disturb that area, and that will get us away from having to do a Phase 2 study, which is a significant savings of about $12,000 on the total project. Benton Avenue Storm Sewer is ongoing as far as the planning. We have awarded the contract to Ranger Construction, so when I say planning, it's in their planning. We've already done all our planning on our side, but they are getting ready to start construction in the spring on that. We have two engineering proposals that are... We have two engineering proposals received for sewer work for the Sunset Heights subdivision. Paul and I are recommending that Wright Pierce be the engineer that we go with, and that will come up further in your packets tonight. And last, Paul and I attended a municipal coordination meeting with MDOT and the City of Waterville regarding the Ticonic Bridge proposal. That project is going to be a very long and difficult project in terms of traffic. It's going to be replacing all three decks of that bridge. So the oldest one is over 100 years old. They haven't completed their planning, but we are probably looking at having most or all of the lanes shut down at summer all times. Right now, they're looking for input from the municipalities as to what our ideas are. It won't be up to us, but they're looking for our information and our input on that. One of the things that we do need to note, and I believe I noted this with you all at a prior meeting, is that there's a World War I Veterans Memorial on the Winslow side of the bridge. It's on the southwest corner, and at a minimum, it's going to have to be temporarily relocated during this project, but may more appropriately be permanently relocated. And that's something that the council's going to have to decide. So we need to be thinking about where that might go in the meantime. I've also been discussing with MDOT. I brought up to them that I would like to have the railroad, currently Pan Am, but they are going to be sold to CSX. I wanted them involved in these discussions because, obviously, the railroad is a huge part of the crossing there, and that crossing is going to be touched. So we're hoping to get them on board, and I also wanted to know about the potential for any beautification to be done on that bridge. I was concerned that it would just be a functional replacement, and in discussing this with Kim over at the Mid-Maine Chamber, we were thinking, you know, if we could get it to be something that's a more aesthetically pleasing structure, that would also be a good entryway to both towns, you know, Winslow to Waterville, Waterville back into Winslow, that it would be a good thing to get done in this project. But MDOT didn't commit to either of those, but has committed to opening the conversations. So we'll be hoping to see some positive, positive information from them. So that's the high points.
Well, thank you very much. One of the things I want to echo is the thanks to Captain Fleming for his years of service in protecting the citizens of the town of Winslow. We've watched him grow from a patrolman up to the captain level in the department, and I think he's moved on to a place where he can utilize his skills to the best of his ability, and I'm sure he'll do an outstanding job. And again, we thank Captain Fleming. We also, I think I could speak for the whole council, Erica, in thanking you. You came in during an election that was unprecedented as far as, you know, absentee votes and how it affected the town hall during this COVID pandemic. You've taken the leadership role in the Orion Rope. You've done a lot, and you've had your plate full from the start and at a time when it's been very difficult. So we want to thank you, and we hope you haven't got scared away yet, and we hope you're still enthusiastic about staying here in Winslow. We've got a few things left to do on our plate, and I'm sure that we're glad you're on board, and thank you again for the effort that you've put into the town in making us successful.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Ray. We're just getting started.
Ray?
Yeah, just a minute. I got Jerry first, please. Jerry, go ahead.
Make sure, we got to make sure that MDOT knows that we want to have the railroad work done with this bridge, Ticonic Bridge, because we don't have the money to do it with Benton Avenue Project. Means that it's going to have to be a complete crossing rebuilt with signals.
And Jerry, as I mentioned, I'm talking to them about it. They, to be perfectly honest, they're not real excited about trying to bring the railroad in on this project. So that's going to take continued lobbying. As far as they're concerned, I mean, they're going to be coming slightly into the intersection, but it's not actually, it's not actually going to affect the signalization there on their end. That's what they're, and Paul can correct me if I misinterpreted any of this when we were on our call, but they aren't looking at replacing any of the signalization or doing anything with that. And when I asked about bringing the railroad in, they said they would open the conversation for us, but as far as they're concerned, it's not part of the scope of the, of the project. So again, it's just going to be one of those things that we continually bring up and hope to get somewhere. We don't know what's going to happen, actually, with the management under CSX. Currently, we work pretty well with the local people with Pan Am, but not so much with corporate. So it really, we don't know what to expect coming down the road with CSX. I've worked with CSX in the past in Lansing. They were more responsive than Pan Am corporate has been, but not what I would call super enthusiastic about coordinating with the town, in that case, the city, on projects. So again, we're just going to have to keep it in front of MDOT and keep doing our own lobbying with the railroad to get this stuff done.
Yeah, well, yeah, if anybody has any concerns or any suggestions, you can talk to Erica, and then we can, I think those are details that, you know, obviously Jerry has some expertise in that, and if you could communicate with Erica outside the meeting, that would be really appreciated.
I'm not going to do it tonight.
Yep, yep, okay. Great. Moving on, just really quickly for some of the department heads to see how it's going.
Ben. Ben had it.
Oh, Ben, go ahead.
Yes, Erica, I just had a quick question for you. It seems as though it's your report time. With the figures dropping dramatically, do you have any idea going forward, we're going to open the town back up to business?
The numbers have dropped dramatically, but the risk has not. If you pay attention to the CDC reports, we're expecting another spike in March. I am watching them. Again, I'm looking at it every week, and I will be discussing with my department heads and my staff possibilities for reopening. We definitely want to have a plan in place. I know that this is something that a lot of people disagree with, but as we've seen other towns open up and schools in the area, we're still having a lot of shutdowns due to COVID, and the new strain that's coming is far more virulent than the one that we've been having around for the last year. So I don't think it's time to let our guard down yet, but again, we are trying to come up with a plan to actually reopen the office. My concern is that anything we do to reopen, we're actually going to create slower service than what we've got right now. Right now, we get people taken care of pretty quickly, coming out to them in the parking lot. If we do reopen, it will not be a wide-open-door situation. The whole reason we had to close in the first place is people would not cooperate with the restrictions, which were wear a mask, keep your six-foot distance, and don't use the bathrooms. The bathrooms were cut off to public use. So we can't have people just running the building like we did in the past. That means it would be restricted entry. The possibilities we're talking about are something like what the Maine Bureau of Vehicle Vehicles is, the BMV, I'm sorry. We, I keep wanting to call it the DMV. What they have done, which is people do not just come in the building. They're screened at the door. It will be more labor-intensive, and it means that we'll be serving, that person's going to have to be served before the next person can come in. So at most, we'd be able to have two people inside at once, and everybody else is waiting. That's probably going to be slower than what we're currently doing with the parking lot service that we've been providing. So, but yes, the short answer to the question is we are looking in that direction in what we can do.
I think, I think we've given you some direction to look at it at the beginning of every month, make your decision, and then we'll see where we go, depending on the numbers and stuff. It's your decision to make, and I think erring on the side of caution and taking, you know, the concerns of your department heads is very important at this particular time, and I think that's positive, so.
If I could, Ray, just one more comment on that is that, you know, I do understand that for a lot of people, they don't understand, and people think that we're the only office in the area that is doing this. We're not. Gardner has announced that they will be closed at least through March. Waterville has just gone back to Zoom-only meetings. We're not out of the woods yet, and this vaccine, while it's promising, the two vaccines that we have, it is coming, the one is coming with a lot of pretty severe side effects, and neither one is showing much promise against the new strain. So the vaccine is not going to be a magic bullet, and we're still, the CDC is still analyzing how it's going to come into play long-term, and my department heads and my staff do need to be in this building every single day. This is their place of work. So it's not somewhere they just come once in a while. And it's not about completely eliminating any exposure risk. It's about limiting the unnecessary risks. So we just want to manage it in a way that keeps everybody as safe as possible, knowing that we can't be 100% safe.
Very well spoken. Thank you very much, Erica. Just, yep, go ahead, Lee.
Through the chair, if I may. Back to Erica's report about the bridge. Could you let us know what preliminary numbers look like as far as start to finish, how long the bridge is going to take? I know it's depending on, depending on the lane closure or whether we have any lanes open or we completely close it. Could you give us, let the residents know roughly how long that's going to take?
Right. So they've given us very preliminary estimates at this point. Construction right now would be beginning either late fall of 2022 or spring of 2023. From that point, they're looking at this being a three-year project if they go with single lane of traffic in both directions. They said that if we do a complete closure, they could cut as much as 12 months off of that. Of course, keep in mind that everything in the construction realm, it's a best guess and it's an estimate. Their proposed detour, should they close the bridge entirely, would be to go back around the Carter Memorial Bridge. That is a four-mile detour point-to-point. So from, for example, from the bridge entry in Winslow, if you were to have to go back out the, back out to the Carter Memorial Bridge and then come back around to the other side of the bridge in Waterville, that's a four-mile distance. So it would be probably a significant inconvenience. On the flip side of that, if we are down to having one lane of traffic in one direction or one lane of traffic in both directions, we stand to have traffic backed up significantly through the town of Winslow. We may not have that many residents as a town, however, we are a big pass-through for people commuting. So we could have traffic backed up past the China Road in the morning and in the afternoon, trying to get back and forth across the bridge. So some people may actually find that that four-mile detour is less constrictive than waiting to make the turn across the bridge during regular rush hour traffic most days. So again, those are the estimates they're giving us. As we get more information, I will definitely be passing that on to council and trying to get that out to the public because it is going to be important. And again, they are looking for our input. So councilors, if you have personal views on how you think it's going to work best, or your constituents are telling you anything, please pass those on because that's what MDOT is trying to gather from us. We don't actually get a say, but they are soliciting our opinion.
Yeah, I'm old enough now to realize the bridge. I've been through three bridge ones. The first one was when we didn't have the Carter Memorial Bridge, and we just adapted where we went to Fairfield a lot. And then the second time, we had the Carter Memorial Bridge, and people that live on, you know, the town office side would go to Fairfield. People that lived out in Benton, and sometime even China, would go to Benton's side with the three bridges over to Benton, and then on the Winslow side. People adapt. People take Clinton Avenue a lot of times. They'd never come into the road. So once you get stuck a few times, you kind of work it out as to what the best solution is. I think this definitely is going to work, and I think, you know, I'd rather have myself a shorter time working on the bridge and adapting than to have one lane, but we can discuss that at later times and stuff.
Thank you, Erica.
Yeah, you know, we're trying to keep the meetings down a little short, so I don't want to get into the details of everything about this bridge situation because we're going to be able to handle them in the future. I'd like to continue right now with the agenda, but we'll ask, we'll let people have questions if they have them right now.
Well, just one. We got a lot of utilities on this bridge, and make sure that those stay operational, because if we move it, that three years is going to increase to four or five years. That's it, Erica.
Lee, you got any, you want to?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Another comment, okay. Sorry to cut you short, but we got a lot of agenda items. I just want to try to get through them at a reasonable amount of time. Department reports just as quick as you can. Paul, do you have any updates for this coming, this coming month?
The only update I've got right now, some of you may or may not be aware, we are down two employees, so we are presently advertising for drivers, and that's where we are. We are going to make do as best we can to add a little bit to the railroad crossings if I can. I was in communication again this morning with MDOT. They are still trying to get something going with the railroad. We're trying to push them as hard as we can, so hopefully something will come of it. We can post it. Other than that, January was quiet. Looks like February is not going to be so quiet, so the guys are pretty busy. We're doing what we need to do to keep the town clean and safe, and that's where we are right now.
Thank you, thank you very much, Paul. Park and Rec, Amanda?
Yeah, as Erica had mentioned, we did have a transition, thanks to Paul's group for helping facilitate the rebuild of that. We also had the big John Deere Moore have some issues at the end of our season, and it's been, that had to be sent away and ended up being very, very pricey to fix, but was necessary. So I was very grateful to sell that truck. I just applied for a big paint grant, which seems kind of silly, but it's about $1,000 with the potential for exterior paint, which will go a long way this summer for all of our outbuildings and shacks and dugouts. Right now, I'm currently not issuing any permits, obviously, for rec center usage or for field usage for outside Winslow programs. You know, usually we have a lot of tournaments that come in during the summer. At this point, I'm not comfortable issuing any permits for those. I really want to focus on the Winslow kids getting to have a normal spring season or as normal as it can be. Kids are really struggling right now, and I really want to, as soon as we can get outside, get out there and get started recreational standpoint. And right now, I'm hoping to have all full programs this summer, obviously modified, but I'm hoping to have all of them. That's it.
Thank you, thank you, Amanda. Judy, assessing?
More. I want to do a shout out of the public is working, I mean, listening. I want to let everybody know that April 1st is a deadline for getting applications in. That's my little public relations for the night. Our office is currently stuffing envelopes to about 350 businesses. It's our annual plea for their complete listing for property tax purposes. I have sent out certified letters to some of the top taxpayers, commercial businesses, like the Hydro, Hydro Electric, CMP, Orion, Alcom, a lot of the big businesses that we deal with that have big values. And this letter is an annual thing that I do, and it's a certified letter requesting information about their property. That sort of protects us from any appeals in the future. If they were not to respond to my request, then they would not be able to appeal their assessment. So it's a protection against a town. So, it's, it's a protection against the town in doing that. As far as the Ag Commission's newsletter, I enjoyed putting that together at the blessing of the Agricultural Commission. And what we'd like to try to do in the future is actually create a page on our town website specific to the Ag Commission, just to keep that network out there for the farmers and the taxpayers and the Agricultural Commission and the councillors and everybody involved because we want to get the farmers more networked. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
I see later on in the program, you're going to be around for the reevaluation options that we have.
I attached that to my department head report. Was I, are we talking about that tonight?
It's in on the discussion proposal for reevaluation options. It's, it's a discussion item.
Sure, I'll be here.
Okay. Code, Adam?
Hi, yes, we, on the code enforcement side, did 15 permits down a little. Of course, it is January, so it's quite normal. On the planning side, the planning board approved a five, Parks and Land 5 megawatt solar array on the corner of Bassett Road and Veterans Drive, and also approved the formerly known as Bootshers Meet. It is now going to be a multi-unit apartment building. As to that, we have had an increase of general assistance applications, and that's about it.
Thank, thank you very much, Adam. Lisa, library?
Hi, all. We got our new server installed this month, so we're very happy with that. Thank you to the town council for approving that. It's made our, our operations go, run much smoother. Our rocket ship did not get installed this year, this month. Unfortunately, the vendor had a family emergency and could not come to install it. I'm working with him to try and get that installed. We'll send pictures as soon as we get that taken care of. We're processing a new book order now, so, you know, if anybody's interested in the most recent bestsellers, we'll probably have them available in a couple of days. And apart from that, we're just chugging along, trying to help people with curbside pickup and get things to people in as creative ways as we can. Tax forms are in, so if anybody needs tax forms, we do get federal. The state doesn't give them to us, but we've got, we've got the basic federal tax forms if anybody needs them. We're doing that in curbside pickup, same way we're doing books, movies and audiobooks, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Just chugging along. You know, if you need anything, just give us a call.
We will, we definitely will. Lisa Gilliam, front office and how's the, the administration running?
I'll just back up what Erica said. The front office has done a great job working with the public, making sure that every need is met. They're doing their tax payments, motor vehicle regis, fish and wildlife, getting marriage licenses. Everything is business as usual. I've even been going out to swear in people that are being appointed as a notary public. So, if you see me outside the office, I'm actually swearing for a reason.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Fire, Chief Rodriguez?
Hey, good evening. I think the town manager summed up the sale of the vehicles very nicely. We're excited that we were able to get the price that we did for the ladder truck. Disappointed in the response from the sale of the rescue unit. So, like she said, we're going to hold off on that. The fire services, we're plugging along. We're working on three grants right now to offset the cost of replacing some equipment. Other than that, there's nothing more to report than what I put in my monthly report.
Thank you very much, chief. Police, Chief McDade?
Yes, good evening again. I also want to thank Captain Forney for his years of service. I know I spoke to him extensively before he went on vacation last week, and he was real excited about going to the state police. I guess you actually applied to the state police over a year. Quite a process, and I think he's looking forward to it. The other, one of the big things I did this month was, now that we're in the hiring process, we're going to have to hire another police officer. And I spent a lot of time trying to revamp the hiring process. It's so difficult now, not just to find someone to hire, but to actually get them on the road. The years of putting someone in uniform and handing them a gun are long gone. It takes months and months and months before you can get them on the road and get them qualified so they don't make a mistake. And it's my job to make sure they're trained properly. So, I put together quite an extensive checklist so that there'd be no doubt about what could be done, so that we could also be, we have more people over time. Everybody coming in here will be trained consistently and we would not vary off the program, so. But other than that, things seem to be good. Morale's real good. People seem to be working real hard, so nothing else to report of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief McDade. Is Peter Tibbetot for the schools an update? Is he on tonight?
He's not, Ray. They're having their school board meeting for budget as we speak, so he was not available.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Erica. I had forgotten about that. If we could have a motion to approve the financial and financial report, please.
Second.
First by, by Jerry and a second by Rocky to accept all reports. Can I have just a roll call vote for that, please, Lisa, just for?
Yep. Ben Twitchell? Gary Quarian?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes. And moving on to the public comment section, I have three public comments to read. First one is from Mr. Ken Fletcher. Please consider the following, and I would ask a response clarification. Order number 3-2021 authorized a purchase of a second new ambulance, but did not specify cost. Should this actually be a second used ambulance by town charter? If other authorize an amount greater than $100,000, then a town vote could be required by citizens' action. Does the council wish to bring this before the Winslow voters if greater than $100,000 is required? Second question, based on the January 2021 Winslow Fire Department report, the actual net received was $73,573, which is less approximately $11,000 than the $85,000 initially spent to purchase the first used ambulance. Based on the actual results to date, it will be another month or less until the initial $85,000 will be recovered. Does the council agree? Thank you. Public comment number two from Marsha Stetson. We continue to oppose the contract zone proposed in this high residential area, even more so with the additional request to allow outside storage. Allowing a heavy equipment storage warehouse business in a high residential neighborhood that will be exiting into a neighborhood between two houses is not what is best for the neighborhood. We all brought houses in a high residential subdivision for a reason, and it certainly wasn't to have a business placed on it. Thank you very much, Marsha Stetson and Michael Coulter. Public comment number three regarding tonight's council meeting and ordinance number 7-2020, proposal to change zoning statutes within Dunbar Acres to HDR to CDZ, I am opposed. I oppose the proposed zoning change for reasons stated in the previous email as, and as stated publicly at a council meeting last fall. These reasons include noise pollution, which is already a factor, the potential for air-soil pollution, public way degradation associated with perpetual use of heavy construction equipment and devalued real estate for many, and especially for adjacent and near proximity homeowners. The latter is a critical concern. No change should be made to long-established zoning that protects so many household families who bought or built homes situated in HDR zone. In order to appease current or future property owners of any property also situated within the existing HDR zone, in my opinion, such a change serves the needs of a few at the expense of many. I request that the proposed amendment be voted down. Thank you, Pat Bowman, Paul Street in Winslow.
Chairman?
Yes.
I got one that I received today.
Yeah, everything that has to be go through Lisa and, and Erica before it gets to, to reach at the public. What's it pertain to, Jerry?
It pertains to access to, I haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay. What I would suggest at that point then is to just go through Lisa and Erica in that we'll, we'll present it at the next meeting unless it's really critical, but I would suggest that we just wait till the next meeting to read it if it can wait.
Well, I think it can wait.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay. Moving on now to table business. Ordinance number 7-2000, yes.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I think there was another comment from Ken Fletcher that we might have missed there because he had two separate emails.
You know what I'll do, Erica, is I'll, I'll try to find it. If you could, well, yeah, I don't have it right in front of me right now. During one of the discussion periods, I'll take a look at it and I'll circle back around and try to read that also at the public, if I could, please. Okay, moving on to ordinance number, Erica, if you have it in front of you, could you Well, if you find it, just let me know. We'll move on and when you find it, we can maybe fit it in between ordinances or orders and stuff. Moving on.
I have it if you would like me to read it.
Yep, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. It is from Ken Fletcher, and it says, "Thank you, Erica. I understand the December 14th discussion was about the actual purchase of a second used ambulance, but I now understand that the approval of $70,000 was just the equipment for a second ambulance purchase. So, if a new second ambulance is authorized at an estimated $230,000 per Chief Rodriguez's 1214 conversation, then the total cost to acquire and equip the second ambulance would be $300,000. $230,000 for the new ambulance plus $70,000 for equipment. Is that correct? I would suggest that people would ask if the first used ambulance startup cost was $90,012. Why is the second equipped ambulance $300,000 based on the current revenue and expense experience? If an additional $300,000 is expended, how long before $300,000 would be recouped?" And that's the end of it, from Ken Fletcher.
Okay, thank you very much, Lisa, for that. Moving on to table business, ordinance number 7-2020, an amendment to the zoning map to rezone a portion of a lot owned by C and L Real Estate on Tax Map 13, Lot 115, from the high-density residential zone, HDR to contract zone, contract zone, high-density residential zone, CZD hyphen HDR. The portion of the lot is described as Lot 87, 88, and 89 in Dunbar Acres and Dunbar Acres Annex Subdivision and recorded in the Kenbri County Registry of Deeds on September 22nd, 1961 in Book 24, Page 51. What does the council?
I make a motion to keep it tabled.
We have a motion to keep it tabled that right now. Is there a second for that motion? There's no second for the motion. Is there a motion to untable the?
I make a motion to untable.
Second it.
Second.
Motion to bring it off the table by Jeff West, seconded by Joseph Gravel.
Just the wording.
Open for discussion.
Wasn't there new wording added and refracted from this? Different than what we have? Because I, I had heard that the last sentence was taken out of it.
Here is what I have here. Could you pass this, Jeff, please?
Well, I'm sure you got the same thing I've got.
Is it this?
Oh, no, it's not.
No, this is, this is what we have to amend it to.
Okay, so this is the actual reading of how it's going to read, correct?
That is what the, some of the councils feel the proposed change is, yes, that that would, that would, if somebody wants to make a motion, right now, we have a motion. So, we got four things we can do when we take it off the table at this particular time. We can accept it as it's proposed.
On this paper?
On this, on the paper you have. We can amend it to change to area to be, we can amend it. We can reject it, or we can postpone it to, in this particular case, the March meeting. So, we have four, four options that we can do. We can accept it as proposed again. We can amend it. We can reject it, or we can postpone it to the March meeting. Those are the four things. Right now, we're open up for discussion.
Okay, I make a motion to amend the ordinance to this language.
Right. Phil Lee is trying to get in. There is, you cannot make a motion to amend it this time, but can Phil please speak?
Yes, for sure.
Yes, this is a contract zoning proposal, and under state law, any of the abuddhas, the interested neighbors are, are to receive a certified mail, mailing of the proposed change before it's to be considered. So, it's a, it's a special requirement under state law. All that has happened, we had that originally when it came up, but then the matter was tabled, but it wasn't tabled to a date certain. It just, you know, each month it appears on the agenda. We have not had a separate notice go out to the neighbors saying, "We're going to consider that here tonight." And they are entitled to that before you should be voting on anything. So, if, if the inclination, the council does want to do something with this, my recommendation would be you postpone it to the March meeting, and we have a certified mailing going out to all the landowners who received the first certified mailing any number of months ago.
No matter what changes and wording that we make, that has to be the case in this particular, this, if we want to change something. So, the, what we would actually have to do, Bill, if I'm wrong, let me know, is make the changes and then send a certified letter with the changes to, to the abuddhas?
No, you, you, you've got the matter on, on the table right now for consideration.
Yep.
And the, the neighbors need to be sent a notice of whatever that change is going to be with a date certain on it. Because there are going to be people who had, they don't know that it's potentially going to come up here tonight, or that it was going to be considered tonight. Because this has just been sort of carried over month after month after month.
So, we can discuss the changes that we want to propose tonight and then re-table it so that people understand what the changes would be. Is that correct?
Hold on a second.
Having a discussion without a vote, but then you're having a discussion without the neighbors having the opportunity to have input to that discussion. I think that, I, I don't like cutting the baby in half like that.
Well, how are we going to get discussion? How are we going to get discussion on this? How are we going to propose a change?
You're going to put?
And then how are we going to get input into the, into the change?
If you postpone it to a date certain and then send a certified mailing to the neighbors that the matter is up for discussion. If some councillor has a proposed amendment, that proposed amendment can be sent along with it so that the, that the neighbors would know what in fact is going to be considered. And that way, they get, they get advance notice of a, of the matter to be voted upon. And that way, they get advanced notice of the matter to be voted upon or considered at least at a date certain.
And that's what I'm asking tonight, Bill. I'm asking tonight, what I'm asking is, can we, can one of the councillors propose a change to this ordinance and then that would be the change that we would send to abudders that we won't vote on it, will suggest, make suggestions to changes, retable it, and then send it to abudders at that time?
Well, how would you, you'd have to vote on the proposed change to have anything, have any type of legal status. What you have right now is 87, 88, and 89 with the language as appears before you. Unless you voted on something, that language does not change.
So the process would be at the next meeting, then we would take it off the table again if we table it now, and then propose the changes and also have a public hearing at the same time for, after we propose the changes?
You would have it on, it would be presented in the open, and people are free to move to amend it, to change the language of it, and it's open for discussion on whatever those amendments might be.
And then public hearing after?
Well, you have to have a public hearing before your final adoption. You can set it up for the, whatever the charter requires there to have the public hearing on it at the next meeting.
Then why can't we make changes now? And then we have a month, and then the public hearing comes in next month?
Because the public, the abudders have not received notice by certified mail that this matter is going to be considered this evening.
Okay.
Bill, can I ask a question?
And if you're discussing and you're trying to make a change to it, you're doing part of the process that they're supposed to get advanced notice of.
Okay.
Bill, can I ask you a question, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is this ordinance still even good whereas C and L Real Estate no longer owns this Mr. Martin owns it solely now.
I wasn't aware there was been any change in ownership. I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, it was recorded last week in the registry.
The, I think the proposed, I think that it can still go forward because it's, you're talking about a change in the use of property which is not dependent upon who owns the property. So I don't think that has to change the legal status of things.
Okay, I just didn't want to go through this another month.
It can make a difference, it can make a difference in who, in terms of who may be appearing to argue whatever that change might be. If you have a different owner, you're probably, you're going to have a different person, I assume, appearing to advocate for that change.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that this, by them changing hands already, that it wasn't going to push it out even further. I mean, we've been at this for how many months now?
Been a while.
Can we, if we vote on this as written, can we make an amendment after the fact at the next meeting? As long as it's not?
I am recommending that you not take any vote on it now because it's appearing on the agenda without a certified mailing having gone out to the interested parties, letting them know that it's going to be considered at this meeting.
Okay.
I don't consider this the tabling from month to month to month without setting a definite date to adequately, under the state law, advise the neighborhood of what's taking place. And in this, since this is a highly charred situation, I think it's very important to dot all your Ts and cross, excuse me, dot all your Is and cross all your Tees.
We will have.
How are we going to involve the abudders doing it the Zoom way?
We would do that the same as we have done with all these other presentations. You may see a lot of other people on this meeting because they are here to present for other issues that are coming before the council tonight. So the abudders will be able to present via Zoom.
Yep.
I know.
I think, now the certified letters.
I've dealt quite a bit with Marshawn and a couple of the others.
Yep.
Okay, now, a question. The certified letters go to abudders only, correct?
Yes. Whoever received it before, the certified mailing went out once before to state proposed contract zoning to be considered. It would be the same people again, and whether it's only people who literally abutted or whether they're within so many feet of it, I'd have a discussion with Mr. Bradstreet regarding that. The details outline in state statute. Just the bottom line is, here tonight, it has not taken place. And it has to be done a certain amount of time before it's going to be considered.
And the link to the Zoom for March should be put in that letter, am I correct?
Yes.
We can email, yeah, whatever, okay. As of right now, what I would suggest to the council at this point in time is that we table it again, which, table it, get the changes we need to Erica and add just as soon as, or Erica, just as soon as possible so that we can. Erica, what's the deadline that we have to have the changes, the proposed wording changes to this order in so that we can do all the work that we need to do with abudders and everything?
I would say if you want it on the March meeting to be absolutely safe, we should have it by a week from today, Monday, the 15th, because we're still going to have to make sure the wording passes legal muster, so Bill's going to have to be able to review it again, and we have to have time to get the certified mailings out after that. So I would say a week from today is what you should be aiming for.
Okay.
No later.
We'll also do a legal advertisement in the newspaper.
Right, there is a, yes, that is part of the process.
Okay.
And that has to be done.
I want to say 10 to 15.
I'm not going to quote off the top of my head, but it's a fair amount ahead of time before the meeting.
By the beginning of next week, you'll, if the councillor wants to make a change in the wording, that you will have that wording by no later than Tuesday morning. Is that sufficient? Next Tuesday morning?
I would say Monday night really needs to be, I mean, Monday, close of business, we should have it, but.
Okay, that's fine. Monday.
Sooner the better.
Monday, close of business, next week is the deadline for, if, for changes submitted to this. Then I would entertain at this point in time a motion to retable this, this. Does anybody have a motion or a second?
Before we do that, Monday next week, I believe it's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
That's correct. I don't, it is a holiday for the town. I will still be working, and Bill, is it a holiday for you?
No, every day is a workday for me.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Sorry.
We'll get it in, we'll get it by Monday, that'll be fine. So I would like to entertain a motion, if somebody would make a motion to table, then is the first a motion to table? Do I have a second to table?
Yes, second.
Jerry Kirian, a second to table. Lisa, can I have a roll call vote, please? And before we table, I would say this, is that we have worked and between the property owners and the new owners of the property that want to add to that property and use that property, I think we have come, and we have compromised on both sides of this issue. We are very close to, I think, accommodating both the businesses and the homeowners, and I think both have bent a lot to make this process, and I, hopefully, the changes that will happen in the next week will be, will be minor in scope in that we can move on from this issue here, because it's dragged on a little bit longer than what it should have. Lisa, can I have a roll call, please, on tabling order number seven dash 2020, please?
Yes, Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes. Yes.
Sorry, Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes. Okay, moving on.
Yes, good to hear.
Moving on to old business, providing for authorization for the town manager to sell the property on Maple Ridge Road, Tax Map 3, Lot 3, eight dash H and eight dash one, with an easement from the Farmland Trust to Trapper and Brook Clark for the high bid amount of $175,000. What's the pleasure of the council? So moved by Ben, seconded by Jerry. Discussion, please? If there is no discussion, Lisa can have a roll call on order number 01 dash 2021.
Yes, Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jerry Querian.
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes. Order, new business.
Motion passed with 7-0.
Yep, order number 03 dash 2021, providing for authorization for the town manager to purchase a second new ambulance to be used as a primary transport unit for the town of Winslow by a department. What's the pleasure of the council, please?
So moved, second.
Did you get that, Lisa?
I did not. Who's first and second?
Jeff is first and Joseph Gravel is second.
Thank you.
Order number 03, 2021, is now open for discussion.
Yeah, Ray?
Yep, go ahead, Ben.
Well, my understanding was we're going to wait on this new ambulance. We bought the other stuff, that's good till June. We're just getting started on a new budget session next week, and this is another quarter of a million dollars that we want to spend right out front. And I still think, we haven't got to the point in the first ambulance where we really need to be, put that money towards the second one.
Could I address, Ray?
Yes, for sure. Thank you, Erica. I was just going to call on you. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, yes, we are going into a new budget cycle. However, the money that we're talking about for this ambulance already exists in capital. It is not going to require a new appropriation. The money's already there. As far as the performance of the ambulance not being vetted, I'm sorry, but I don't understand, I don't understand that unless you're wanting to see a full year worth of data. I will let the chief speak to the urgency in starting to do this, but understand that right now, operating with one ambulance, we have no backups, and it's not like we're going to order an ambulance today and have it next week. This is going to be a process. It also needs to be bid, so we are probably going to be well into the next fiscal year before we would actually see a new unit on the ground and have any bills to pay for it.
Chief, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. In the initial proposal two years ago, the intent of bringing upon the department, the transport service, was to help alleviate the cost of operating an emergency service. The, this service we've been providing all along without any form of recovery for the costs and expenditures that have been applied toward providing this service. My initial projections for revenue for a year were $175,000 after 12 months. We have been operating at seven months now at the end of January, and we have received over $186,000. We have earned over $186,000. There is a definite need within the community, Central Maine, to have additional transport units as demonstrated by the November 23rd Morning Sentinel article where it is discussed in depth, and we have, I think we have a duty to our citizens to have a continuity of service. The only way we can ensure continuity of service is if we have a second backup unit in the event that the first one goes down. For maintenance is out on another call. I would encourage the council to approve this. This purchase, we, as the town manager has stated, it's not like we can run out tomorrow and go to the ambulance shopping mall and pick up an ambulance and bring it to Winslow tomorrow. It is, at minimum, an eighth-month process. Thank you.
Hey, chief, I get a quick question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we have space to store that brand-new ambulance?
Through the chair, we do. With the sale of the old Quint, we have, we have room we can, to park the ambulance in it. I will, I will, through the chair, I think I have an idea where this is going, and the discussions of a new station were in, were in depth prior to my arrival and had been going on for two years prior to my even coming here. So if the concern is that this is an end run for me trying to get a new station, that is not, that is not the case.
It is not an end run, and I'm going to speak for a few minutes on this issue. This is not an end run for a new station. We're running an ambulance system. At the time we started the ambulance system, we had in the budget, we thought we'd get two used ambulances and we would work from there. Right now, because we were uncertain of the revenue stream that was coming in, now that we have a better picture of the revenue stream, the reliability of a new ambulance is so much higher. We need a second ambulance in the town of Winslow. We cannot function safely without a second ambulance. The revenue stream that's come in, say, whether we purchase it outright with capital, which I don't suggest, but leasing options are very affordable, and we should look into leasing options, not only, and we could pay it outright, but we still have to keep a capital account because we do have still some aging vehicles within the system. I think that details. But the need for a second ambulance has been demonstrated time and time again, and just dealing with one ambulance is where we're really, really at the realm of a backup, of our backups, either Delta, Waterville, and we don't want to, we don't want to be there. We want to have reliable service in ambulance to the town of Winslow. Any further discussions on this topic at this point in time?
I have one other question. How is our training going, chief?
Training's going, yes, sir, I'm here, I'm sorry, it took me a second to unmute myself. Training, training continues. It is, it is an arduous process, especially with the constraints that the college put on, the system with the advent of COVID.
And how many do we still have in training, Tony?
Right now, we have two.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
If there is no further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
According to Ken's letter, any expenditures, over $100,000, has to go to referenda.
No, that's.
I'm a little confused right now.
That's not what it said.
Is that what is in the town charter?
I got Jeff on the floor first, Erica, and then you'll be second.
It didn't say it has to, is what I'm getting at. That's all I'm saying.
Erica, go ahead.
Let Erica explain it better.
Go ahead, Erica.
I did consult with Bill Lee earlier today as far as what that actually means. It does not have to go before the voters by town charter. You all can vote on it, even though it's over $100,000. However, citizens would be able to circulate a petition, and if they got enough signatures, could overturn your vote and call for a public vote to spend that much money. And they can do that on any expenditure above the $100,000 limit. Bill, please correct me if I got any of that wrong. Bill, please correct me if I got any of that wrong.
Bill, are you still there?
I am.
Did you hear?
You made a good statement.
Did you hear Erica's question?
Yes. You can vote on it, but if it's, if it's a hundred, over $100,000, if a group gets together with the petition process, they could force the matter to a public vote at an election, in an attempt to overturn that.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Peter.
Bill, is that any, any item, even a capital expenditure on the annual budget that this could happen to?
Any single, I don't have a charter app in front of me, but any single item of capital improvement of over $100,000, $100,000 or more.
Really?
Well, this was made back in the 1960s.
And you're talking Public Works Truck.
Yep, okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Peter. If any other further questions, if there is no?
I got one quick one, sorry. You're saying, Erica, that we have the money in capital now, and we won't have to budget for that new ambulance?
Correct, we do have sufficient funds in capital. I would make the caveat that as part of the bid process, when we are soliciting bids for this vehicle, we would ask them to quote both outright purchase options as well as lease options. I do agree with Ray that it's better not to spend all of your capital money upfront. If we extended it out a bit longer through a lease option, we would know for sure that our revenues were covering the expense, and we would continue to put some more monies back into capital expenditure. We know we do have another aging vehicle out there, which is the pumper, which at some point, we're going to have to purchase another one as well. So that would be part of the bid process. So I don't want to say that you're voting on whether we purchase outright or lease it at this point. When, when we actually got bids in hand, we would be bringing those back to you and council and having you review the bids. We would make our own recommendation, but you would vote on that.
My, see, I'm not arguing necessity, okay? My concern, of course, is the funds, and if you're saying that we have the funds available, then that's what I.
We have approximately $328,000 in capital funding for the fire department existing right now.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, Lisa, can I have a roll call vote on order number three dash 2021, providing for authorization for the town manager to purchase a second new ambulance to be used as a primary transport unit for the town of Winslow Fire Department?
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
Moving on, order number four dash 2021, providing for authorization for the town manager to renew municipal funding with Central Maine Growth Council, CMGC, for the year 2021, in the amount of $26,761. What's the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
So moved by Jerry, seconded by Lee. Discussion, please.
I have a question. What do we get here while we're not getting out of KB Cog, which we are already paying dues to?
Ray, if I may?
Yes, for sure, Erica.
I do have Garvin Donigan here, and he can address questions directly regarding this issue. Would he be able to speak?
Yes, he would. Go ahead, Garvin.
Yeah, good evening, councilors, Erica, members of the public. Nice to be with you here this evening, albeit digitally. We're in front of you this evening with regards to renewing our annual municipal partnership, and of course, wanting to be mindful of the sequencing of the town's upcoming municipal budget process. I do, just would also like to say, I do have with me my colleague Sabrina here, who's also a Winslow resident. To the question of what do you get out of this, and you should have received a letter dated, I believe, January 11th, in the aforementioned amount. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but maybe just a quick thumbnail sketch. Number one, I hope your support for us is also a reflection for your support to the business community, particularly in these hard times of COVID. So our body of work has been extremely busy in supporting area businesses with deploying out COVID-19 financial relief related to assistance and the preparation of PPP applications, both in Winslow and beyond, as well as standing up our own grant programs and others to deploy financial relief. Likewise, maybe just to give you a little snapshot of what some of that looks like, we're very excited to have recently completed, worked on some projects of significance with regards to expansion and retention efforts and incentive packages related to Northeast laboratory services. As it relates, that has looked like, for Winslow, a facility expansion, expansion and hiring or jobs, as well as really a benefit to that business as, within the context of the global health pandemic, their prepared media kits and testing and the bioeconomy work that they do. Likewise, pleased to have been working with Maine and Company, or, excuse me, Maine and Company, Maine Crisp Co., shout out to Maine Crisp Co., is a new business in the Winslow that we are so pleased to have worked with. Likewise, a lot of housing, housing is a big body of work that we focus on and believe that it's critically important from both a supply and demand economic perspective and having good housing stock to contribute to surrounding populations. Similarly, we're sending out site planning packages on behalf of the town, trying to recruit people and initiatives, and we continue to get a good uptick in that, as well as seeing a lot of warehousing-type leads in the region as well as Winslow. There was some reference to the MDOT's build grant and the Titanic Bridge redevelopment project. We are working to deploy out money on behalf of the town of Winslow and the town of Waterville for beautification and place-based economics elements that the MDOT grant doesn't cover. Likewise, we did contribute to your comp plan that is in drafting phase right now, though I think it might still be paused due to COVID-19. We focused on the economic section and the regional collaboration there. We drafted your narrative section and your data analysis as it relates to socio-demographics, labor economics, and retail sales data. I'd also really like to use this time to thank Paul, of course, Erica, and Judy in having worked on a multi-year project to recruit standard waterproofing in their new facility to Winslow. We did bring that deal into town, worked on the drafting of the TIF CEA, the grant enhancement agreement, and did apply for the main TIF application component. And again, we worked really as hard as we could to have that project clear everybody's desk before Erica came on board, and again, with a lot of good input from Judy and Paul on a nimbleness perspective. So I would say we hit the mill you of shaping the conditions in which growth can occur within the region as well as Winslow, and that is typically represented through a prioritization of projects, going after grant money, working with businesses to support them. And likewise, and as maybe by way of example, the Growth Council were the ones that had originally ID'd, investigated, and did the drafting on your Northern Border Regional Commission Grant, which is your 1,000, 1,500-foot left slip turning lane into Millennial Drive there. I believe you actually have an extension on that, and that was a 300K federal funding opportunity that we are proud to have been able to contribute on with the partners as well. So I think, I hope that gives a little flavor of some of our work within the last 12 months.
I appreciate your input in this, I, because I, I made a mistake when I read this. I thought this was a new thing. I didn't realize it was a renew. I apologize.
No worries.
Any other further discussion on this matter? If there's no further discussion, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please, on four dash 2121?
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
Order number zero five dash 2021, providing for authorization for the town manager to enter into a contract with Wright Pierce Engineers to design a replacement sewer system for Sunset Heights Development Area at a cost not to exceed $160,000, with funds coming from the sewer capital account.
Second.
So moved by Jeff, seconded by Jerry. Discussion, please.
By Lee.
By Lee? Seconded by Lee. Lisa, did you get that?
I did.
Okay, discussion, please.
Thank you.
My question to Paul is, Paul, you guys, you got, the Public Works and you and Erica chose Wright Pierce. Any reasons for Wright Pierce?
Well, we, I sent out requests, and I got three proposals. I sent out three requests. One engineering alter came back, their timeline did not match ours. I got two requests, I got two proposals back, a year ago, engineering out of Fairfield and Wright Pierce, which we are working with right now for Benton Avenue and Chaffey Brook. When we looked at the numbers, Wright Pierce was a little bit less expensive than a year ago, so that's the recommendation that we're going.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul.
Competent engineers.
Yep, yep, we've worked with them a lot before. Any other further discussion on order number five dash 2021? If there is no further discussion, Lisa, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hey, Ray?
Yes.
Ray?
Go ahead, Ben.
Now, is this the one across and down by Erica's where we talked about before?
Yes, at Sunset Heights, yep, we're talking, yep, is the start of that process for sewer replacement, for water, for just storm drainage, the whole start of that process, to do engineering work so that theoretically, depending on how we fund it, we'll be able to start those projects in the spring or summer, Paul, is that the timeframe?
Yes, I believe, depending how we do with the rest of our funding, I'm hoping sometime this summer, we can get at least a small sewer project started, get some of it started.
And depending on how much money we, we do put into that, we would be, you'll have a, you're having a plan to do as many streets, multiple streets in that area, is that correct?
That's correct. I, I'm not gonna lie to you, this might be short of a ten-year project if we do what we have available this year, but.
You gotta start sometime, that's for sure. Yep, long overdue. Any other further discussion on five dash 2021? If there is no further discussion on five dash 2001, Lisa, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Querian? Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Order number six dash 2021, providing for authorization for the town manager to enter into a contract with Comprehensive Land Technologies and Company to clear all vegetation trees along the sewer interceptor line that runs from Lithgow Street to the main pump station at Chaffey Brook with an estimated cost of $80,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Joseph Gravel. Discussion, please, on order number six dash 2021.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. Erica and Paul, have we been in touch with the railroad on this? I know that we have a needs man.
Yes, I've been in communications with the railroad people, and we have no issues working in that area. They're more than willing to help us. They're also, right now, willing to allow us to cut most of the trees between the right of way and the railroad so we don't get slowdowns in the future. It's kind of one thing why I'm trying to push it while we're still dealing with Pan Am and the people that we know and can deal with, not knowing what CS Tex is gonna be like. But DEP has been pushing us now for the last two or three years to cut this line and get access to it. About 7,000 feet of line that we have no access to, it's our main sewer line to the pump station, so it really needs to be cleared up and readdressed and get, get the environmental people off our backs.
How are they gonna require a person on site while we're working?
As far as the railroad?
Yes.
If we stay within our right of way, we're far enough away from the railroad, we don't need anybody. If we get within, outside our right of way, start cutting some of their material, then they will put a person out there as a flagger, so we're probably gonna coordinate that, maybe they will do something that we, that we actually approach upon and stay away from there for most of the time. I'm not sure what the timeline's gonna be. It's gonna depend on the contractor has going, but this is the first step to get it approved.
Just a couple of questions I have. What, Paul, what's the consequences of not doing it?
The consequences of not doing it, we're probably gonna get fined by DEP.
And Erica, is this the money, 80,000, is that in the sewer? Are we planning on taking it out of the sewer capital account?
Yes.
It's currently in there this year.
Okay, so we have the money to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Along with the engineering from Wright Pierce?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Paul, is there gonna be a plan in place after this to keep up with it? So we don't have to spend $80,000?
Well, my plan is ultimately, yeah, my plan ultimately is to construct an access road along that line so we can get in there, but that requires a permit from DEP. It's above what we already have. This not require a permit, it's maintenance, but the next step is to get the permit and try to build an access road so we can actually access our facilities.
No, I understood, I understand that, but I mean, until that time, is there any plan in place for, to keep the vegetation down as much as possible so we don't have to spend $80,000 every few years to do this?
Correct. No, I mean, if I have to hire somebody with a bush hog to keep it bush hog once a year, that's what we'll do, but I don't think it's gonna grow back very fast once they're done. This is the same company that's doing the interstate clearing that you've been seeing on the shoulders, and once they get everything mulched, it doesn't grow back for a while. It leaves quite a, quite a trail of wood chips and everything.
Good enough, thank you.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, can I have a roll call vote, please, Lisa on?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Ben.
I have one question.
Yep.
Okay, I have one question, Paul.
Yes.
Once we do this, we're using that area in and out down there anyway, right? So we're gonna be down there all the time when necessary, so we're gonna make sure it's get cleared.
Right, absolutely. It should have been done a long time ago. This line's been there 45 years, and nobody ever kept it open, but we should have.
If there is no further discussion, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote on six dash 2021?
Yes, Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Querian? Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
Resolution five dash 2021, providing for the authorization for the town to participate in a 12-month food recycling pilot project. Moved by Lee, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion, please? The only thing, Erica, if you have anything you want to say too, but the only thing I want to make sure that the council realizes is that there is a cost to the project. So in your packet, you had the cost. The cost pretty much is for, you know, we have to pick up the totes twice a week. The cost pretty much is for, you know, we, we have to pick up the totes twice a week. And then there's nineteen dollars per stop. So there's forty dollars a week to pick up the totes. And then there's a, also a tipping fee, which means tipping and rental of the totes. So that will be another ten dollars or forty dollars a month. So the total coming up for the program is, is about a hundred and eighty dollars a month that we're going to pay for the food waste program.
We're going to pay?
We're going to pay. We, that's part of the program.
Was this the last presentation we listened to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And so there is a cost to the program, which comes to about two thousand. Now, the offset of the program comes in that if we take out per ton of waste that we take, of course, the landfill cost is sixty-five dollars a ton. And the picking up of the garbage is another hundred and twenty. So there's a hundred and eighty dollars per ton that we're paying right now for garbage to process in the town of Winslow. The payment of the, of the project would be that we would take tonnage out of the system. So we wouldn't pay that a hundred and eighty dollars per ton that we now, and that we would be paying for, that would pay for the program. Erica, do you have, would you like to comment on that? Or I know we have people that are, that are online right now that would like to comment too, maybe?
I, I think you covered the points that I would have made. But yes, we do have Suzanne Lee and Mark King and the rest of the group that's been on that committee here, if you would like to allow them to speak.
Susan, would you like to speak, please?
I mean, I guess only, you know, if there were any questions with regard to the food recycling opportunity, I mean, the way, the reason that the DEP and the Mitchell Center are bringing the pilot to you at this time is because we really see it as a savings opportunity because the cost for food recycling is actually lower on a cost-for-ton basis than what you're paying for having it in the landfill. So, you know, and I have some charts I added because, you know, I wanted to be sure it was clear. I have some visuals, but, I mean, they basically show that. They show that the cost, it's really an offset. You're, you have food waste. The town will continue to have food waste and probably grow your food waste. And we're just giving you a lower-cost alternative for processing it versus what you're paying today.
But you have to have a lot of cooperation among the people living in Winslow to make this viable.
Yes, and that's why we know that education is important. Once you explain to the townspeople that by simply, each town's residents can help the town's financial situation by simply removing the food out of their trash can and collecting it separately for recycling, just, I mean, the concept of food recycling and recycling is a concept people are familiar with. That, you know, there's a benefit to taking it out and we can show you the financial benefit. I think somebody brought up at one of the meetings we had in the interim that a town, you know, in China, they have a sign at the, that goes along with their recycling that thanks the town residents for actually helping to cause, you know, create tax savings by their recycling activity. And this is totally true. And food recycling, unlike any other recycling, is totally controllable. But here in the state of Maine, we're not dependent on outside markets for buying our food recycling. This is something we actually turn into compost or biogas, both of which benefit the state. So not only does it save the individual towns' money, and therefore the residents, it actually benefits the state. And it's not dependent on outside markets like other forms of recycling. So, you know, it's, it's really, I know it's hard sometimes to understand that there can be such a win-win opportunity, but this is really one of those.
Yeah, go ahead, Lee.
Through the chair, if I may. Question to someone in the program. What is, what's the current plan for educating and informing the residents when this program unveils?
Well, the important part of it is, is to actually begin education even before the program's set up. So I think that one of the things we've talked about, and I mean, we do have a communication plan. And the first piece of it is involves coordinating with the towns, some of the more active groups, so your people who are active in recycling, some of the, you know, social groups in town, and bringing the groups together via Zoom these days and talk to them about what's coming. Then we'll use all the channels that the town already has. So if you Facebook, if you have your website, and we'll begin prepping and letting people know this exciting thing is coming. We'll also be looking at getting local coverage in the paper for the fact that, you know, Winslow is participating in this exciting pilot between, you know, the main DEP and the Mitchell Center that will eventually be, you know, a statewide opportunity. But Winslow will be sort of a leader in this. So we, every way that there is possible of reaching the Winslow town residents with the message about this food waste or this food recycling opportunity, we will be utilizing that. So it's a, it's a combined effort. And in addition, I mean, a sort of a side benefit besides educating people about food recycling, we're also, according to the hierarchy of food recovery, the better thing to do even is to donate your food that's still edible and still good to the food pantries. So part of the education will not just be focused on, okay, if there's nothing else to do, you can recycle it. We'll remind them that really, if they have excess food in their homes and if it's somehow going to eventually end up, you know, in recycling, it would be better to take it today and bring it to somebody in the community and try to feed other people with it.
Thank you.
And just for a little update, I have in front of me, which I'll pass to you guys too, is we do have this program right now in the Winslow Elementary School. So an average per month of, we're looking at an average per month of over eight tons of food waste that's going, that we're taking out of our, our process right now and, and utilizing as compost and other, other, other manufacturing type of things that, that are produced by, by the, by the waste. So we do have this in Waterville. What Suzanne also would like to see it is expanded to the high school. And at that point, if you say you have eight tons at the elementary school and maybe six to ten tons at the high school, then you're pretty much going to be paying for the municipal side of the program. Suzanne, would you like to comment on that? Is that expanding into the high school would be very beneficial also?
Yes, well, if you don't, I mean, can I share a screen? Can I just show you?
Yep, go ahead.
I think it does a pretty good job. So this is the presentation that you saw before. Let me just slide down to show you, I mean, it's a Okay. So this is a food, can you see the chart?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so if you look, the food recycling cost, you can see that the more, right across the bottom is tons diverted. So it goes from eighteen and it goes to three sixty. So this is just for the town. But the point of this is, the more that you divert food waste, the more that your cost goes down for collection. So I think it starts somewhere, according to this, like, we have it, you know, depending on the pickups and everything, starting maybe at ninety versus, and then, but coming all the way down to, I think, about forty-three dollars a ton. So when you start combining the opportunity to bring in the school, which the school's food waste far outweighs what the town will be, you will really be able to get a very cost-efficient program going by doing that. And on the opposite side, so you can see here sixty-five odd dollars per ton for landfilling, but that's actually very minimal. That's literally just the tipping fee for landfilling food. But the, and really, the cost is greater because you have to transport it there. But in any case, even at this, you see that the sixty-five dollars a ton never changes. I mean, the more food waste that you have, the more that you're going to pay. In terms of food recycling, the costs come down with the volume. So it makes a lot more sense. And, you know, Winslow, because of the close cooperation between the town and the school, you know, Kyle, it was terrific sharing a lot of the experience that they've already had at the elementary school. There's a really easy pathway to bringing the school waste and the town waste together. And it's the same, it's the same processor, so it's agrecycle. You know, we even see some potential opportunity for working with them on the cost that the elementary school are currently paying because now we'll be joining that with the town collection.
And we're no obligation, you know, if we find after six months of the program, we can just stop the program. So we're under no financial obligation if it, if it doesn't work out. And you're talking a hundred and ninety, a hundred and eighty tons of, to get it from, from picking it up and landfilling it versus sixty-five tons of, if we can divert a ton, then, then we would become semi-profitable at the three-ton level on the municipal side. I think it's worth a shot and I think it's a very worthwhile thing. And the education part will be critical in, in getting participation. It looks like right now that the location that the committee is, would recommend to the council at this point in time would be at the old recycling spot we had at the public library. So that's what we're looking at, at this particular time. Go ahead, Joseph.
This is twelve months here. You said six months, which.
Well, we can, Suzanne, could you comment or Erica, that we can get out of the program anytime we want to, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a opportunity, pilot opportunity that, I mean, we believe that every month that you participate, you will see the benefit right from the outset. But there's nothing, there's no contract. And as a matter of fact, the way you pay for it is just on a monthly basis. So you just let us know that you don't want it anymore next month and the bins go away and the collection stops. So I don't, we also have Mark King from the DEP here. So Mark, maybe you want to talk about the, the importance of the program?
Absolutely. One of the things I want to stress too is that we're not working for exit or agroenergy. They just happen to be the business that is working in the area and offers the best option to move the food scraps. If you wanted to do a compost option and we had a facility nearby, I'd be just as happy to do a composting operation locally and keep those nutrients within Winslow. But currently, that's not something that's available. So we just are trying to connect you with the best option to help move those food scraps in the right direction and help you guys save some money and also create an environmental benefit as well.
Erica, any final comments on, on this issue? All right, Peter, I'll get you.
Yes, Ray, if I, I just wanted to mention, you know, we had our first meeting of the committee on January twenty-ninth, so last Friday. And it was, it was very positive, I thought. There was a lot of participation. Linda Woods, who's also on the call tonight, was there, Todd Martin. We had quite a few people come on board and, and discuss this. We also had a couple of the other, we had, I'm sorry, not Sabrina, the two young ladies that are working with UMA were both on that call as well. And we came up with a lot of good ideas. But we also had Kyle Price from the elementary school and we had Peter Tibbetot. And both of them were enthusiastic about moving forward with this program and the school's participation as well, particularly as one of the education arms for this program. So I think we are going to have a lot of opportunity to partner with the schools. And Peter said that the school is definitely on board. So with him being the superintendent and putting his support behind it, that means we'll definitely have support and more resources available there.
Yeah, I think it's very positive and I, I, I think it'll be a good program. And part of agricultural's responsibility, agricultural, is to clean up the site. So the site will be clean, the, and I, I'm very enthusiastic about the program also. Peter, did you want to say something?
Well, I just, what are you going to put at the library? A collection site for?
That's where the collection site's going to be, in the far corner, where the, where the past recycling will be, in the north corner of the parking lot.
How often does that get picked up?
That gets picked up twice a week, so.
You don't think this is going to attract seagulls, rats?
Suzanne, would you like to address that? I'm confident that it won't, but Suzanne, or, Mr. Martin, could you?
Yeah, I, I.
Yep.
I can actually address that. The way the sites are run, the totes have a pretty good ceiling cover and they're kept clean. Any, any litter that happens is immediately picked up. And any question of any concern of odors or those things, I can be called to come right out. I, I live in New Sharon. I operate out of my house. I can be in Waterville, Winslow area very quickly and I'll make sure that everything's all set. I, I work for the DEP and you pay my salary through your taxes. So there's no extra cost for me to come and do that.
And I think also, to, to kind of confirm what Mark said, Kyle, that's one of the things he talked about at the meeting, that that was not, they have not seen that issue. And they have fifteen totes that get collected. So they have a lot of experience with it and they've been doing the program. I'm not sure how long, but it's been going on.
Almost three years, over three years now.
But you're also.
So that's plenty of time to
That's correct.
to see how enthusiastic Kyle
Control.
is about the program, you know, should, confidence about it.
One of the things that we didn't stress enough in our initial meeting with you guys is there's a feedback loop and we expect to hear from you when things aren't working. And we expect to hear from you when things are really working. So we know as we move this throughout the state, we can learn from our experiences and get better and better at it. So you guys are being sort of the pioneers to help us get it going and hopefully we'll grow it from there.
Thank you.
You know, that's a great point, Mark, actually, you know. For sure, we're not leaving you because Erica and Ray, I'm sure, have seen that we have an agreement and a tracking sheet. And the tracking sheet, I think actually it was in the original presentation. I mean, we will be monitoring the collection of waste charges. We'll be looking at how much marketing we're putting into your community to track every month what's happening. So we will be in touch with you. We will be watching and there to assist you all along the way because your success is our success. We hope to expand this program. And Mark is out there every day talking to people throughout the state about this, just this type of pilot that we have with you as the future for the state. And so if it doesn't work for you, that would be the end of our initiative. But we don't, we don't foresee that. We think there'll be a tremendous success and that you will help us spread the story of how terrific food recycling is for the community.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, Lisa, could we have a roll call vote? Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Todd, for coming in and thank you, Erica, for speaking about the project. We appreciate it very much. And, and Lisa, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Querian?
Yes.
Jeff West?
No.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappo?
No.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes. Moving on, resolution.
Passes five to two.
Yep, thank you. Resolution six dash two thousand twenty-one regarding property hardship abatement request number one dash two thousand twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by Lee. Discussion, please?
I don't believe we can discuss anything, Ray.
Nope, I, I don't believe we can. If there is no discussion, Lisa, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Are we voting in favor of an amount or not to vote for an amount?
I think there's been no, Erica, would you, would you like to comment on this particular resolution as to, if we don't fill in any amount, then it would be a denial, correct?
No.
Oh, no?
So she paid half of the oldest tax bill. And again, we can't use any names here, this is to remain confidential. However, the taxpayer did come in last week, paid half of the amount, which was a thousand thirty dollars and some change. That's what's remaining for a full abatement. So that would be the amount if you voted yes. If you vote no, I believe we have to fill that in as a zero, do we not, Bill?
Thank you. The council needs to fill in an amount. You could abate the remaining taxes for that particular year that are due. You could deny the abatement request or you could go somewhere in between.
Okay. Okay.
But you need to plug a number in.
Well, I would suggest we plug in the remaining.
The remaining?
That'd be my suggestion.
$1,030, is it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Is that the remaining? Erica, did I get that right? You a little mumbled, $1,030?
About $1,030.62 or something like that. We can get the exact number.
$1,030.62 is what we've plugged into that report.
To be, to make sure you hit it right on the head, you might say that you move to abate the remaining taxes, interest and lien charges for tax year, whatever it is. So you don't end up missing by a dollar or something, because you're off a little bit on the interest.
Move to abate current taxes and liens?
Current. Okay.
Remaining.
And remaining?
These are going to be taxes from about three years ago, aren't they?
It's the 2018 and 19.
Fiscal 2019.
Correct.
Yes. You need to say that.
Yep.
Or else you might end up abating taxes you don't intend to abate.
Okay. 2000...
What can we word it?
Fiscal year, the remaining taxes, interest and lien charges for fiscal year 2019. Is that correct, Lisa?
It is correct.
Okay, that'd be the form of the motion.
Any discussion? And just a little clarifying information for people listening is that we had at length discussions in executive session, and we don't take these matters lightly. And it is a hard time that people are going through right now. And so we took everything into consideration. So right now, resolution, if there's no further discussion, resolution number six dash 2021, move to abate current taxes remaining in interest for fiscal year 2013 for the amount of $1,032.32.
No.
Nineteen. Oh, I'm sorry, 19. I'm sorry.
I would recommend you say the remaining taxes, interest and lien charges for fiscal year 2019 on this property. Because if you use a specific number, you may be off by a little bit.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Move to abate current taxes, remaining taxes in interest and liens for fiscal year 2019. Lisa, you got that all written out?
That's perfect.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, can I have a roll call vote, please, Lisa?
So...
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go ahead.
Are we voting on abating?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Yep.
So a yes vote abates it?
Yes, would be approving of abating the remaining taxes for 2019. Go ahead, Lisa.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Clarion?
Yes.
Jeff West?
No.
Lee Trahan?
No.
Peter Drappo?
No.
Joseph Gravel?
No.
And Ray Karen?
Yes.
So the motion has failed three to, I'm sorry, three to four.
Four to three, yep. Okay. Moving on to discussion items. We're going to, first item for discussion is the town forest ordinance. Erica, do you want to start the conversation?
This is regarding the ordinance of how the town forest is going to be managed. And I would actually like to turn this over to Judy and Kate to address this.
And if we could bring Amanda in, she's been a lot more involved in getting around this or promoting this.
I apologize. Amanda's still here, too.
Yeah, she's, yeah, I noticed that. Yeah, the, well, the purpose is to, is to basically manage, get the forest under a management, more intensive management than it currently is. There's, when you walk the forest, you can see the difference between, there's a well-managed and Rocky, you can, the name of the abutting property owner that manages...
Bessie.
...that's a management.
Bessie.
Bessie.
Bessie, thank you. Yeah. You can tell the difference between how well their forest is managed versus ours. But the biggest thing is we'd also like to see it open up for more education, more recreation, and managing it for those rather than just having, you know, somebody come in and cut some trees every 10 years. It's a great resource for the town. I think when we get some trails out there, people will come out there and use it. We do have some issues, specifically access is the biggest one, but we think we can work on that. Amanda, do you have anything to offer?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that the purpose of the ordinance is the town taking the approach that we do want to use this for recreation. We want to preserve it for education, and we're going to treat it as such. The other piece of this, and the reason it's on a discussion item instead of just waiting for next month's voting, is I just attended a canopy grant workshop, and those are funds we'd like to go after to help create the recreational trails and to further those goals ahead. And we kind of need the verbal okay that the council would like to head in that direction. Open for any questions. Rocky's been really involved, too, so he can speak to it as well.
Go ahead, Rock.
So some of the issues, like Amanda said, is the boundaries. We want to define the boundaries. Right now, Harold Barnett, who's our forester that we hired to manage the property, put out a bid, because he is also a member of the Small Woodlot Owners of Maine Association Forest, and one of the foresters for them. And they're putting out a bid to try to get a better price on boundary marking. So we're in hopes of getting a better price through that. And also, in the past, they've done some cutting out there the town has, and there's an account already set up for that. We'd like to see that account put in so that we could use it for what we're intending or looking into offering out there, trails, education. So it's still in the early stages. Like I said, Amanda's working on getting some grants through this canopy project, and she's contacted a lot of the towns that have forests, and it's a really great resource that we're very fortunate to have. So, I mean, I think we should definitely support it, and I think it's going to help the town of Winslow down the road. I would like to see the council definitely support what we're trying to do over here.
Yep.
And I have, yeah, I have one more question for Amanda. If she could go over the timeframe for this canopy grant, because there are deadlines that we'd like to meet.
Yeah, there's quite a few deadlines. You have to attend the workshop, which I did last week. And then you have to have all the initial information into the state by middle of March. And the great thing about this grant is you can get money from it year after year, but it's very competitive. And what they're seeing as a trend is due to the pandemic and people enjoying those outdoor spaces more, a lot of towns are taking advantage and creating opportunities in their own town. So we kind of have a tight timeline. And the great thing about this grant as well is we, it's matching funds, but it can also be matching funds in volunteer hours. And, you know, if Paul has his guys bring some gravel out for a parking lot, that's all matching funds. It doesn't necessarily have to be monetary matching funds. Our goal is to make a minimal impact to, you know, the taxpayers. Our goal is to use the grants, use the wood from the law, and make it self-serving on itself so that we don't have to get anything from the budget, per se.
You know, it would help me a lot, when I first got on the council 100 years ago, I did, one of my first acts was to go out to the town forest and actually walk both sides of the town forest as far as I could go. I know that a lot of that acreage out there is probably not accessible to a lot of people or a lot of, must be a lot of wetland. To get the grants, Amanda, would you have to have a site plan in place for what exactly you're proposing for trails or for different activities out there?
Yeah, the grant is pretty specific, and there are a lot of things that they need available to them. The great thing is Harold's already gone out and done the mapping. They actually want the mapping done with the trees and the boundary lines. And they need the proposal of what we're anticipating doing. But they understand that once you get in there and you're in a forest and you're making trails, that you might need to segue away from your initial plan. And as long as you keep them abreast of that, they're okay with the changes happening. So they want specifics, but they're also pretty fluid with changing if you need to change.
Right, and I understand there'll be need change. But it looks here at discussion, town forest ordinance. So you're looking for guidance from the council to say, we are going to approve this use of the land or for grant possibilities and looking, and there might be some cost to the town. So when you do bring the ordinance to the council, being specific and having plans in place would help a lot. You know, site maps or what exactly your intent is for the forest land.
So is there a copy of the ordinance with your packet? Because that was my initial understanding.
Yes, there is. There sort of is, but there's...
Okay, good.
There's no site plan, there's no...
The ordinance, well, the ordinance is more saying that the town is going to declare, yes, we are okay with the town forest being a place that's going to be called the town forest. It's going to be used for recreation. It's going to be used for education. We're going to do good forestry management. That's really the only purpose of the forest. It's also saying that the AG Commission will kind of oversee the development of those plans. They're going to oversee getting the grants. They're going to oversee recreational trail making plans. That's kind of what the ordinance is saying. It's not the specific, the trailhead's going to start here and end here. It's more saying, yes, as a town of Winslow, we want this far a town. We're committed to keeping it recreational, educational, and to preserving good forest management.
Because the AG...
Did I misspeak, Kate?
So the AG...
No, that's, that's pretty good, pretty good summary.
Go ahead, Joseph.
So the AG Commission already has put a lot of time and effort in this. So basically, you're just giving the AG Commission, this is kind of the guidelines that we're going to be using? So we're just asking that you approve this so that we can go after these grants and stuff? And the AG Commission would kind of be the go-to person for committee? So that way, you know, the council doesn't have to get, I mean, they're going to be kept abreast of what's going on, but, you know, it's not going to take up a lot of the time for the council.
So at the March meeting, you'd have an ordinance put in place? You'd have an ordinance number?
We would like to get the grants, right, Amanda?
Yeah, so, yeah, if we have, if we, if the council feels as a whole that this is the direction they want to head, then the ordinance will formally be voted on next month. It just, we didn't have it done in time to have it in the newspaper for this month. So you would have it to vote on next month. I just am looking to say, yes, this is the direction you're good with heading, or no, it's not, because I can't proceed with the canopy grant this year without a consensus of, yeah, no, that makes sense, or no, I don't really think, I think it's going to be a lot more discussion involved. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and the ordinance doesn't commit us to putting money to it if...
It doesn't, it, nope, there's no financial commitment in the sense of we're asking for money. It does give the commitment that the stumpage fee be used towards the town forest, which is how it's been used anyways. For example, when we hired Harold to make the forestry plan, the stumpage fee pays for that.
Yep.
So it's, there's no additional tax money that is required by the ordinance.
Erica, would you like to comment any further before or next month we would have an ordinance in front of us?
Yes, that would be the goal. So we would have, we would have time for the public notice to be advertised. And as far as the stumpage account goes, yes, that's what that money is already used for, so it's not like we'd be repurposing that money for many other use. The stumpage account is monies that come from harvesting that forest already, and it's put back into maintaining that forest as it is right now.
Yep, okay.
And if we were to approve at our next meeting, does that give you enough time, Amanda, to put in for the grants?
Yes, well, if you, if I get a consensus from you guys that, not off record, obviously, but consensus that that's the direction we're willing to head, just having the note saying we discussed it and that you're positive, you have a positive feeling about the ordinance, I can proceed, because I'll still have March meeting first vote as well. Does that make sense?
Yep, it does make sense. I can ask every council what they feel about it. Right now, I can start with, Joseph, how do you feel about it?
I'm definitely...
You're definitely on board?
I'm definitely...
Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Not sure.
That's okay. We're not asking for...
Absolutely.
Yes.
And I'm for it, too. Ben? Ben Twitchell?
Thank you.
I don't see him on there.
Okay, that's okay. Well, I think, Amanda, we've given you, here it's five to one, so we, or even maybe six, nothing on the fence, but I think we've given you the okay to start the process.
Awesome. And if anyone has any questions before the next meeting, I'm happy to speak with anyone.
Yep, and for all the people on the Agricultural Commission, thank you for doing the work and, you know, keep up the good work. You guys are doing some great things for the town and moving us forward. And we thank you for your commitment for the volunteers of the Agricultural Commission. They've done a lot of good work over the last couple of years, and we thank them very much for their effort. And keep doing it. The second discussion item is...
We appreciate, we appreciate the support we get from the town as well.
Thank you, thank you, Kate. That's very nice. A proposal for reevaluation options. I know that we had a letter from Judy on that subject. It is a discussion item. Judy, would you like to, or Erica, would you like to chime in?
I'm going to let Judy take it away, because she's the expert. And while I have a kind of high-level understanding of what she's trying to do there, I am likely to kind of mess it up, so I'm going to let Judy address this all by herself.
Mess it up on my own. Probably a lot of you have been on the council as long as I've worked for the town of Winslow. This is my 11th year, actually. And as you all know, and the public should know, the last complete town revaluation we had was in 2008. It was an out-of-state firm by the name of Vision, which we still have the square program for. At that time, in 2008, the comprehensive townwide revale cost $285,000 to the town, almost $300,000. And it was an intense, all-encompassing revale. Since 2008, as your assessor, I've pretty much maintained our current ratio at 100%. However, over the years, as you know, the cost of construction changes. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of people that are renovating their homes without getting permits. There's no way to catch them, no way to really find those out unless they're putting them on the market or for sale. So what happens is when we get a sale come through, and it sells for $300,000, and we've got $150 on it, then that's a red flag for me. And at first, I was okay with it, and I was actually able to capture those and visit those properties, but they've become more so. And I think that's because there's more properties on the market over the past couple of years. Moving fast forward to the past couple of years, one of the ideas I had proposed back in January of 2020 was what they call a statistical summary update. was what they call a statistical summary update. I feel confident that I've done what I needed to do for the town to maintain where we've been. But again, with the cost of construction and some of the interior upgrades, I felt that for a low fee of $90,000, we could get this statistical summary update, where a company would come in, they would review all of the homes, not the interiors, but they would review all of the homes, all of the sales. They would do comprehensive requests for information from all commercial and industrial. Everything would be completely updated based on current cost of building, income approach, sales approach, all three different approaches. And that was for, I'm sorry, it was for $90,000. So last year in January, I had written a very lengthy memo sort of detailing the summary of what's happened over the past 12 to 14 years. And moving forward now, here we are, and what I've experienced, and as well as everybody in the state of Maine during the pandemic, is this complete massive sales. The whole market was just completely full of sales. And they were selling, and we're seeing sales, as you've seen in my department report, that we've dropped down to about anywhere from 75% to 80% of market value. That's OK, as long as the whole town is at the 75% to 80%. But what I'm concerned with are the ones that are still at 90% and some are still at 75%, and that's where you get that gap and that inequity. So I sort of reached out to the people that I thought would do a good job with the statistical update. And I said, I wanted some what-ifs. I just wanted some ideas of, you know, what they thought about how we should deal with the pandemic and the market and get some feedback. So I gave them some information about the town of Winslow, and they had written a letter back quoting an actual comprehensive, complete, public relations notices, updates, schedulings, everything, for $200,000. And I thought, wow, for an extra $100,000, we could get a complete, brand-new inventory and the rest of the statistical update as well, with brand-new photos and everything. And you'd have your comprehensive revale that would last probably another 15 years. So that's sort of what I was bringing to the table in my department head report, was just this idea of the possibilities. So last year, we did agree, or you approved, of $45,000 into capital. And then another $45,000 was going to go in this year towards capital to pay for the statistical summary for $90,000. I'm not very comfortable in having a complete townwide revale or statistical summary update done during this COVID, because I think it's a bubble that may pop, and it may go the other way. And we're not supposed to react to the times. We're supposed to see and look for trends. But now, more important than the sales is the inventory. So I'm sort of struggling with this. But what we are proposing is actually starting it, if we went with the complete townwide for 200, they're willing to spread the cost of this over two years, which is very generous. And what they would do is they would start this winter, and they could actually work on it all next year and make it effective for 2023. Or we could pay for the whole thing and have them do it for 2022. So these are just options that are out there, and they're just ideas and thoughts that I wanted to bring to you during the budget process as well, and just sort of get the little feelers going, see what your reaction is to it. I think it would be very healthy. I think with this company, fine, they've done a lot of work in Maine. They know Vision inside and out. They know market. And I think they've done a really good job for other towns doing the same thing. They used to work for the Vision Company, but broke off from that when it got sold out. And now they run their own organization and doing these smaller towns, so to speak. So again, it's just, it's a topic of discussion, one I did not put in fully for the budget this year, but it's just basic, let's put the concept out there and just sort of feel you out.
For, one question I have, Judy, for the, if they're going to start, are you talking about this winter? Like, right off here?
They, if we wanted to, we could start it this winter and have it done next April 1st of 2022. Or we can spread it over a period. They would start the process this winter, but they would not get into it until the following winter. They could like get all of their preliminary work done, maybe some of the inspections, and then plug it in for the 2023.
So you're talking about
And they would like to sort of keep track.
You're talking about outside and inside evaluation. Are going to, people going to be able to let, are people going to be receptive to letting these people for inside evaluation?
And that, right, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up now. It is definitely a comfort level. Every single town goes through it at one point. And maybe because I'm an assessor, I would rather have the knowledge knowing that every single property was looked at, and not just mine because it went on the market. I would like to think that their public relations is good enough to allow people in Winslow to work with them, because it would be, quite honestly, to their benefit. Everybody would be on the exact same page. They'd all be on the exact same level. I know Winslow has a lot of proud people. I've worked with them very closely for the past 11 years. I think they're a very decent, respectable bunch of people. And that's the type of people I grew up with and was born with and was raised by. And I think having that relationship with them over the last 11 years and making this revale a mom-and-pop operation that I sincerely think that it could work if we worked with the taxpayers, I really do.
So currently, we have, we had put in $45,000 last year. We're putting in another $45,000 this year, right, Erica?
Yeah.
And then we would have to come up with the extra $100,000 over the next two years, I believe, either the
Yeah.
the next budget season.
Yeah.
So if we keep the same amount or close to the same amount that we have here, we could pay it as we go along and keep the same capital expenditures the same.
That's right. Yeah.
Is that correct, Erica?
Or you could do the smaller project, which means that they won't go into the homes, but they have, they have a system that they've got in place where they can, they'll probably write a letter to the owner, or they may give them a quick call, especially if it's a property that has sold, just to get some information about their property. But they wouldn't be invasive, they wouldn't be in the home.
Well, what you said for the $200,000, though, is that a lot of people do modifications to the interior of their homes that we would not even probably catch in this.
That's right.
If you're going to spend
It would be a nice clean
It depends on what you want to get. If we're going to do an evaluation every 10 years, and we're going to spend the money every 10 years, then I don't, I think we should do as thorough evaluation as possible so that we catch everything that we
I think it's a
So that it's fair, that if people do modifications, that it's fair to people that don't do modifications. What's the council's, just looking, Erica, what's your thoughts on this process?
I tend to agree that this is not something that you would do on a regular basis, but every, somewhere between 10 and 20 years, it should be done. I also echo Judy's concern that the pandemic could be artificially inflating property values. And I think the more, the more fair way to go about it is to have the full evaluation. We are kind of cherry-picking right now with, if you're honest and let the town know and you get your permits and you've done all that, then you get reassessed. If you're not, and you just kind of do some upgrades, but don't ever let us know, you're getting away with the same tax rate you've always had, which really results in the honest people getting more of a tax burden for the same services. So that is an unfair, that's an inequity, as Judy put it. I don't think, you know, if we come up in 10 years, we may not want to look at doing a full one again. We may want to look at doing a statistical at that point, and then maybe look at doing a comprehensive at a longer period of time. But I think every, every so many years, it's something that we should definitely be considering to try and re-level the market, so to speak.
It doesn't, it doesn't, and it's a stigma that's out there. And that's why I would like to work with that team if they were to come in before I retire, and make it a mom-and-pop operation, and explain to the taxpayers who have known me for the past 11 years that this is not bringing in new money to spend. It's equalizing what we're already spending. It's redistributing it in a more fair and equitable manner. It's not creating new revenue. And that, for some reason, is a myth out there that a lot of people don't understand.
Would it be, and the offer that they're giving is to start in the winter, could we start in the fall? If people feel more comfortable with the fall, could we start then?
Oh, they, they're willing to actually start this winter or next spring and make it a two-year process or a one-year process. They've been actually very thorough in their letter and basically laying it over a two-year period if we want to. There's three options here.
Judy, can you clarify, when you say this winter, do you mean, I think Ray kind of already asked this, but I'm still not sure we're 100% clear. This winter being, I mean, we're in February right now, or do you mean coming up for the winter that would include fiscal year 2022 or spring of that year?
OK, let's see. So based on the letter, if they were to do a full reevaluation for $200,000, they could start this summer and fall, and it could be completed by next summer of 2022. Or they could start next spring and make it, and work for the whole year and make it effective for April 1st, 2023.
OK.
I'm not very comfortable in having them start something this summer with the way we're all having to wear masks right now. I just, I don't think the people would be very comfortable with it either.
Maybe next
I'd really like to see this start Yep.
A year from now.
Yep.
And so we need to decide whether we want a partial evaluation or full evaluation.
That's right.
$100,000 or the $200,000 evaluation. By that time, we would have 100 and, roughly 150,000 by the time we started
That's right.
into the, into the capital account for this project, so. And if it takes another year, we could probably have, we could probably have the whole amount if we keep the current
That's right.
funding level that we have. What's the council, the council feels about a partial evaluation versus a full evaluation? And we're just having, this is just discussion. And no one's holding their feet to the fire here, that's for sure.
Why would you spend any money on a partial?
I wouldn't.
That makes no sense.
Yep.
And it's been since 2008. These should be done every 10 to 15 years.
Yep, yep. Did you hear that, Judy?
I did.
Yeah, the council just feels that I think we should do the full evaluation to make sure that if we're doing it periodically, that let's do it right. And somehow, if we need to figure out a timetable for payment
Right.
so that we're sure we have the capital that we needed if we start next spring, a year from now, to complete it within a year.
That's right. And they've promised that the price would not change if we wanted to do it over a two-year period
Yep.
paying it off.
Yep, well, that's going to be, I think, I think as we get closer to that, I think the biggest thing tonight is to say that, yeah, we feel we need to have a full evaluation, and we need to start a year from now.
I, I would really look forward to that. And especially with the industrial properties that we have, they would do a full, complete overhaul on all of those, which would be great.
Yep. Any other comment by the council or Erica on this subject? Nope, if not, so I think we've got a direction. Thank you, Judy, for
Thanks for hearing me out.
staying around and helping us out with this subject. Next on the discussion items is cultivating medical marijuana as a caregiver. Want me to start? I can start. Yeah, I'll start. I know that Mark Robey is on the phone right now. And I know, I'm trying to summarize some of the things. Currently, a medical marijuana cultivating facility is only allowed in a mixed-use zone. And as, as it stated in the letter, is that Mark is in a low-density residential area right now. So, and it's only allowed in mixed use. So as the letter states, we have a few options. Mark, are you still there?
I'm here.
Would you like to have
Thank you for all you do.
Have a few, thanks. You want to have a few comments, or would you like to add to the conversation?
No, I guess I came to answer any questions. I'm hoping that you're going to be able to do, have a puppy that wants to be on TV, answer any questions that anybody, anybody might have, Ray.
Yep.
Hoping that something can be done so that on this old farm, we could have a medical marijuana cultivation approved.
Yep, and right now, if I'm not mistaken, and Erica, if I am, please let me know, is right now, we have a difference between the local laws, the local statute, and the state statute right now. And I believe that the state statute now allows medical marijuana cultivating facilities, which is just growing marijuana and then processing some of the marijuana. It's not a storefront, it's not a, you know, a concentration facility. It's just right now is that on, on this particular cultivation facility, you can have up to 30 plants, and then there's a canopy restrictions. This is tier one of the, of the process and licensing. Erica, anything to add? What we would have to do is we would have to, we have a couple options. We could change, we could make an ordinance or change the ordinance to say that a marijuana cultivating facility could be used in whatever zones we felt appropriate. So it could be low, it could be, right now, it's just mixed use. We could say it could be rural, it could be in low density. It could be, naturally, I wouldn't suggest it be in high-density residential, but those are some of the options that we have. Jeff?
Adam.
Hey, Ray.
Yeah.
Ray?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh. Yeah, looking through the ordinance and looking through the rest of our ordinances, that particular type of use could fall under our definition of agriculture. And if we did go that route, then that would be allowed in mixed use and low-density residential and rural as well, and not in medium and high-density residential, which may be a good route to take. We should probably run this through our planning board. But whatever direction you want me to take, I'd be happy to try to figure out a way to allow that type of use in different zones, if that's the wish of the council.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Adam, I got a question. Could we base it on acreage with setbacks?
You could.
The only reason I say, I mean, you take some of your low-density area, you might have two or three houses that are right on top of each other. Whereas
Right.
Cushman Farm, they've got 40 acres they had to work off of, and they don't have any houses right on top of theirs. Just thinking out loud.
Right.
Erica?
Yeah, keep in mind that they have to follow the state rules as well. And they, the state does have an enforcement mechanism for does have an enforcement mechanism for medical marijuana cultivation sites as well. We just typically don't see big grows in small places. I'm not saying that it couldn't happen, but there's a lot to think about as to what type of changes would need to be made. That's probably why the, maybe the planning board would want to take a look at it, or if we want to revisit with our medical marijuana committee.
Well, I was going to say, wouldn't we be better off starting with the marijuana committee first before we go to the planning board?
We could, we could. You know, at the time when we made this ordinance up, I was part of the committee, and I believe we were under the impression that the cultivation side needed to be addressed as well. I don't want to speak for everybody on the committee, but I know that I didn't know that if a town did not opt in, that you could still have a medical marijuana cultivation facility, according to state law. You couldn't have the stores or the manufacturing, but you could still do the cultivation, so.
Yeah, that wasn't real clear.
Now that we have a clearer picture, maybe, maybe we could figure something out.
Go ahead, Erica.
I just wanted to add in here that, you know, we did, when this issue first came up, we did run this by Bill Lee as well, and we do have a, a split between our ordinance and state law, and Bill is suggesting that we do review our ordinances and try to come into line with state law. So what form that takes and exactly what that means is what needs to be determined. So, but there's also, MMA has information coming out now on adjustments the state is making to its laws as well. So that's something that we also need to be aware of as we move down this, this path, and I can try to get the most recent stuff from MMA, I'm sorry, MMA, and provide it to the council as well.
Yeah, and then just to add to that, I think one of the changes they're making is allowing bigger grows on the medical side, so it's something to keep in, in mind for where these small lots in certain zones, you know, do we want to, to zone that use out? Definitely something worth looking at.
Because we're going from 30, 30 plants to 60 plants. Is that correct, Adam? I know that we had talked before.
I believe so. I believe so.
So right now, in any mixed-use land, is they can have right now 30 plants, but it might go to 60 plants?
Right.
And that's per a camp-
And that's not counting seedlings and, of small plants, which is, there's no limit on, so theoretically, there could be a pretty big grow in a pretty small lot as it is, as it stands in a mixed-use zone.
And you couldn't, and you could, even in places like low-residential, which is, which is more adaptive for that type of growth, is that you, we just allow it at the present time in rural areas where that would be the best place for them, is that we, they can't do it at, at this particular time. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
So at the very least, we, we need to consider expanding the zones for marijuana cultivation facility into these areas. How we do it? And you had mentioned before that it could be put in place under the current agricultural use for rural and, and low-density residential.
Yep. Which is also allowed in mixed use, so.
Yep.
That's one avenue. And then, like Jeff said, maybe limiting the size to a certain acreage might be beneficial as well. Now, we, we don't, I don't think we need to worry about setbacks because it would be an indoor grow. Our ordinance does not allow outdoor grows already. So if they were in a building, that building would have to meet setbacks rules of the zone, so it's probably wouldn't be that big of a deal. I think the lot size would be a better thing to look at.
So this medical marijuana cultivating facility would have to be indoors?
Yes. According to our ordinance.
Does a hoop house count as being indoors?
What's that?
Does a hoop house count as being an indoor grow?
Yes.
Okay.
What? What's that? The aluminum with the plastic around it?
So-
And I, if I can jump in here, that when we, when we started doing this, well, we came back in May, but I came back in May, but then found out that it's really hard to get rid of tenants that don't pay rent. By the time we got people off, off the property here, we did, we put up a hoop house, and then we realized that we were, well, talking with Adam, that we, we were restricted and not able to do what we had expected to do inside the hoop house, which is, you know, way down off the road. And I, I know we're, we're in a unique situation that we're on a big piece of land here compared to some other properties in this area, but it'd be really nice if we could, if somehow it could happen so we could use that building we built for this growing season.
Is that a, a new structure?
Yes. I got a permit, I got a permit from you, Adam.
You did, okay. Good.
I paid, we paid, we paid for it.
Just asking.
I think we ought to do-
Fair enough.
-try to accommodate these people.
I think so, too.
Absolutely.
Don't you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. I mean, it's in their, you know, it's in their, their history as far as owning that farm, and I think we should do everything we can do to make it happen.
We want to keep agriculture.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, and I mean, this is, this is here, it's here to stay.
That's right.
And they're, they're doing, they're doing their due diligence to go through the process correctly.
Erica, and I, I just bringing this out for discussion purposes, what if we had a joint meeting between the planning board and the marijuana committee in the next week or so, and then hash over the idea of like, you know, explain the problem, Mark could explain the problem, Adam is right up on speed with this situation, and come up with a recommendation for the council, maybe, maybe even for March or the latest April, to work through some of these issues and come up with a recommendation?
I think that's certainly doable. Mark, when does your growing season start?
May. I mean, winter's changing.
We've scheduled our next meeting.
Seasons are changing, right? I'm sorry, Adam.
I would say we do have a regular scheduled planning board meeting on March 1st, so I don't know if a special meeting would be necessary.
No, I don't think it would be, but could you, when you have this topic, could you invite the current members of the marijuana committee on?
Sure.
Just a question on timing. So if you wanted to have an ordinance change come before the council, we would have to have time to publicly, we would have to have time for public notice. So your council meeting for March is March 9th. If your planning board meeting is March 1st, I don't know that that allows enough time to get it before the council in March.
Right, now, there may be a possibility of a first reading, but the second reading would have to take place the following month, which would be first week of April, right?
Second week, technically.
Yeah, second week.
And then you've got to wait 30 days.
And you go, and you go wait 30 days.
Yeah, why not? Can you do two readings in one?
I mean, the-
You, as the council, you can move to waive the second reading.
Yeah, I know that.
That is entirely up to you.
Okay, so.
But this, there would need to be notices, but this is a town-wide thing, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no butters that need to be notified or anything like Just to add in the paper, I guess.
I think Bill has been, has left the meeting, but I don't think we need to do a butter notices, I'll clarify with him, but we do need to have the public notice published.
Yeah, right. I don't know if six, seven days is enough, probably not.
But if it's-
That's why I'm thinking we may want to try and call a special meeting prior to the first.
On an amendment to an ordinance, do we need two readings?
You can still waive the second reading.
No, I understand, I just didn't know if we had to have two readings on an amendment.
Yes, you do have to have the second reading, but you can waive the second reading when you've-
Right.
Reading.
But, you know, if he's going to make his grow season, we need to step it up now.
Do you think that it's a-
Well, if-
Go ahead, Adam.
I mean, if, if it's pretty, if it's pretty black and white for the council, I mean, I can come up with something in lieu of the planning board. I know you like to get their input, but if it's something you're going to say yes to anyway, is it really needed? And they are probably going to say yes to, but, you know, that's up to you guys.
Well, either, either way, we have to have the reading on our March meeting. We need to have both of them that night.
Yep.
Adam, can you come up with a way to make this happen in March, for the March meeting?
I can try.
Okay, let's do that.
Why don't we do that, and then-
Bang.
And then you can pass it over.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can come up with a, with a solution to the problem, and then you can pass it over your planning board, and if, by that time, we could have advertised for that prior to that, and it's just a way, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but at least it gives us potential for, for meeting or for resolving this issue.
Yeah, we were successful with our Zoom meeting last week, so if it's just a matter of getting us together on Zoom and going over some material and getting stuff figured out, then that's possible.
And I would, I would suggest, like Erica had said, that you have a special meeting, if you can, before, before the, the March 1st meeting. Erica, do you agree that that would be a positive? Okay. If you, if you can make it happen, that'd be great, Adam.
Maybe the middle of next week.
Okay.
If that works.
It's up to you and your planning board and the marijuana committee, as long as you contact them, and if you can pull it off, that would be great.
Marijuana, give me a place.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many members we'll have, but we'll, we'll make our best-
Give it a try. I think, I think you have a very good grasp of the situation with you and Erica, and coming up with a preliminary plan will ease, ease the way for the planning board to understand the issues that we're, that, that are going to have, and I think that that would be a positive thing. I know it's a lot, I know it's a lot of work, I know it's just not, it just sounds easy, but it's not as easy when you're looking at all the situations, but keep Bill in the loop, and then we'll try to move forward.
Sure, sure.
Sorry about that.
We'll make it happen.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
No problem, you're welcome.
Moving on to, if we've discussed this item, moving on, I think we, the NLC food program, I believe that's what we're talking about here with NLC. I think we pretty much covered that for the most, did we, Erica, or is that something different?
No, it's the NLC line program, so-
Okay.
We had had a presentation from Wes and Ashley last month. This is about covering the lines, sewer, water, and such between the home and the main. We indicated when I had talked to you that we need more discussion on this because although we have gotten positive feedback from the references that were provided, the council's having some angst with using our logo or our city seal, or town seal, rather. So I have both Wes and Ashley here to answer further questions, or you had indicated that you wanted to discuss other options.
Yep. Well, I'm going to give the floor to the two people and for a few minutes, and go ahead and comment away.
Wes or Ashley, do you want to, again, the, the issue is the use of our town logo on the mailings. So there's just a lot of discomfort with that because although it's not a town program, it appears as though we're putting it forth as a town program. So are there any other options other than using our logo on the mailings?
Yeah, so first, you know, thanks, thanks for having us both back. Just want to kind of quickly go over why we input the logo and why it is important. So utilizing the logo, you know, absolutely allows us to reach a larger audience. It allows the homeowners to receive the best coverage at the lowest possible premium. It lets them know that this program, this is a program that you guys are participating in, and, you know, of course, it aims to educate about the water and sewer responsibility. You know, we find that without the logo, typically, education is very tough. Just looking at this personally, it would, it would just be another flyer that I would throw out if it ended up in my mailbox. So, you know, in terms of taking the logo off, certainly we're to work with the logo is, is certainly important and paramount to, one, the education, and then to keeping that, that, that up premium low, and also allowing this coverage, but I'll let Ashley's do it.
Sure, yeah, thanks, thanks again for having us. Unfortunately, the one thing we can't change with the program is the use of the logo, but we do have a lot of options with the letter that we do send out. You do a cologo, I know that's sometimes what other cities have liked to do, they feel like that helps show that it's a program that the city's just making available, but, you know, it is our program, so that's something that we can definitely do. I know also some, some partners, you know, we, we always think that we're a separate company as well as 100% voluntary. We can sign the letter, sometimes it is signed by the city introducing the program, but we can sign that to help, you know, increase that awareness that this is our program. But I always really like to stress with everyone, we never mail anything to a resident unless we have your review and approval prior. So even if you voted to move forward with the program, entered into the agreement, if we do not receive the approval of that letter, we don't mail to the residents, so you do always have complete control over that. So what we do is we have a template that we work out of, but it's not set in stone. We work with you on the language to make sure that it's something that you're happy with, as well as, you know, first mail campaign, you might get some feedback and want to change something for a future mailing. It's not something, you know, you approve once and we run with it. We send it over to you before each and every campaign because we want to make sure that everyone's still on board, you don't want any changes, everything like that, and we don't ever mail without your review and approval. We do have over 1,000 partners, and they do use their logo on the marketing material. As Wes stated, it really does help to let your homeowners know that this is a program that you all are participating in, and it does allow us to offer that most generous coverage for the lowest premium possible. Our program is only available through municipal partnership because that allows us to set up our terms to make sure we cover what is actually your residents' responsibility. We know that there are some other companies out there that don't work with municipalities, but then, you know, that leaves your residents with gaps of coverage for street repair and sidewalk repair. You know, they don't use local plumbers to make sure that- know, they don't use local plumbers to make sure that they're following your local codes and things like that. So we do understand it is a big ask, you know, to use that logo, but that really does help educate the residents of their responsibility, because right now they are looking to do when they do have those issues.
Is, is Paul forging me? Are you still on the line, Paul? I think Paul's gone.
Paul has left us for tonight.
Okay, all right. I know that at the last meeting, he did comment on that the homeowner's responsible from the house all the way to the connect, I believe, depending, so we're talking about all their property, plus any street or side property or sidewalk fixing that has to happen. That's my understanding. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, that's what Paul told us last.
Is there any way you could send us a few examples of some of the mailings you've done in the past with other, other city logos on it?
For sure, yes, we can, Wes and I will send Erica some templates, I can give you our standard template that we work out of, but then also just to see how some people have used the co logos or, you know, logos differently, you know, we offer typically, there's two, two pieces of mail in the letter, one is just kind of, we call it a list, I don't know why they call it that, but that's what they call it, and that kind of explains, you know, why the city got involved in this program about aging infrastructure, you know, wanted to help educate the residents, and then the second piece is the actual offer letter, you know, letting them know about the details of the program and how they can enroll, so we can get you a few options that you can take a look at before making a decision.
That'd be great, thank you.
Now, we're going to go into a construction phase in Sunset Heights that's gonna be pretty extensive. If, say, a homeowner would, would sign up for your program, if we uncover these sewer lines and we see like a deficiency in the sewer line attached to, what happens as that program then at that point in time? Would that be covered as we start cracking into these old sewer lines?
So would you be, you know, during, during your infrastructure upgrades, would, if you, if you noticed something with a resident's line, is what you're asking me?
Yeah, what would be the procedure, say, a line is cracked or beyond being able to reconnect it to new infrastructure?
Sure, so we typically do not go out and just repair or replace the lines, you know, if the city goes out and cameras them, or does an infrastructure project and wants those lines upgraded, but obviously, if it's a sewer line that's not even connected anymore, that's a line that's not in proper working order, so the resident would be able to file a claim. There is a 30-day waiting period with the program, so they would have to be enrolled in the program, and, you know, for 30 days in order to...
Well, there might be a leaking line or something that, when you dig up these things, and they're very fragile, you know, and when you take apart the main line, collateral damage could, could happen in these 30, 40, 50-year-old homes that we're gonna be digging into. Just something for thought, I don't, I don't want to make it a lengthy discussion here, it's just, you know, I just want to make you aware of some of the things that we're gonna be doing in some of these areas and stuff. Any other discussion for the council? Any other questions that they would have? I think you're gonna send Erica the pamphlets, and Erica, could you scan those and send them on to the council? And then...
I guess I can, and I can make some hard copies for Jerry as well.
Yeah, okay, and then for, we would have an ordinance in, for consideration at the next council meeting in March for acceptance of the program, or to vote on?
Would be in order, yes.
In order, okay, so, so I think that's the path, if, if everybody's in agreement, the path should be to get whatever information that's relevant to the program to the counselors before the March meeting, and then have people, you guys available to answer any questions at the March meeting for voting on the, on the order. How's, does everybody feel about that? Is that a good thing?
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good, okay. Thank you for coming and presenting and asking, and answering any questions that we have, and we'll see you next month.
All right, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good night.
Yep.
Just for you guys, Wes and Ashley, at least if you're on an actual order, you won't be waiting through the entire meeting till you come up. Thanks for hanging in with...
We'll try to, we'll try to get it at the front end, we'll give them a low number so they won't stay.
I had another town meeting, so it allowed me to go to both.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, guys, bye.
Yep, and the last is budget workshop schedule, Erica?
Yeah, so we, COVID is, you know, a new world for all of us, so typically, we have not broadcast the budget meetings in the past. However, since we're not allowing the public to attend, we were gonna do these by Zoom and allow, allow them to be broadcast. There's a couple of issues, the first of which is that Chad will not be available to help us with our very first meeting on the 16th of February, or for the one on the 24th. So we would need to look at the potential to broadcast those another way, which we've been trying to play around with Facebook Live, there is a way to do that, or we would need to reschedule those two meetings, so looking for the council's input on that. The other thing is, if we are going to do those two meetings via, we can publish it on Facebook Live, we can publish it on YouTube, if we sign up for an account there, if we do it with those two meetings, would we want to do it with all of them? So it's kind of a two-part question there.
My feeling is we should stick with the original schedule if we can, if we can Facebook Live them or YouTube them, that would be a positive. They're gonna be placed on the webpage anyway, is that correct, Erica?
That is correct. We're gonna have the budget out there ahead of time, we're soliciting input from the public now, so that they should have those budgets in front of them well before the actual workshops. In addition, I have all of the Zoom meetings set to record, so we will publish those after the fact as well.
It's just my feeling that just having them recorded on, and, and putting, on Zoom and putting them on the, on the webpage is fine for those two meetings, and then the rest will, Chad will be here to livestream them, so that's just my feeling, I don't know, what do the other counselors feel?
That's fine.
So that's fine, so we'll Zoom those meetings, record them. As far as I know.
You will, you will be meeting in the rec center, Jerry, you'll be just as you are today.
Yep, yep, so I guess that's, that's the direction that we're giving you. Any other further discussion?
Right.
Well, go ahead, Chad.
I know it's gonna be hard for the public to hear me, but is it my understanding that there's been more budget meetings added, Erica?
I sent out the first batch of them last week, and I finished doing the rest of them, I think Friday I sent out the rest of them, I can't remember exactly what day, last week's kind of merged into a blur for me, but yes, there's a grand total of 11 meetings.
I'm gonna have to go through the rest of those and see if I have any other conflicting dates as well, by the way, it's Chad.
Understood.
I think we got a process in place anyway, I think, I think Zooming and putting them on Facebook will give, you know, people access to them, and they can review them at that point. So Chad, you'll get back to us and for the rest of them, and, you know, we can make a determination, too, at the next meeting whether we want to change any dates or not, but right now, I think it's consensus of the council that Zooming and then posting them on the webpage fulfills the need for, for public disclosure at this point.
Well, it's a workshop, I don't want...
It's workshops, right, so, but, okay, well, go ahead, Jeff.
We're not actually required to allow public...
Yeah, I know, I know, but just for...
We're kinda going above and beyond already.
Yep, yep, Jeff?
Oh, no, Peter's got, he's got to tell him.
Can we have a quick, just two-minute discussion on limiting presentations to 10 minutes?
For...
People giving presentations.
I think you guys directed me to do that.
I apologize, that...
Go ahead, Erica.
That was supposed to be on the agenda.
That, that's fine, Erica, you've had a full plate. I just want everybody's opinion, if we, is that proper? I don't know.
You guys directed me, I directed Erica, that anybody presenting, that I was gonna give them a 10-minute timeframe, and then when, at nine minutes, I was gonna say you have a minute to, and then they were not to go over by a minute, and then I was...
Okay, so we don't need any, I don't know, I don't know the procedure, we don't need any ordinances or anything, just...
I didn't think you would.
I think that...
Just let them know upfront?
We're just gonna let them know that 10-minute presentation...
Kind of like we do with the public comments section.
Yep, yep, yep.
We, we just arbitrarily said two minutes should be enough to get your point across, and that's the rules of our meeting.
Yep, yep.
Three or four of them, and when you start climbing up to five, I hate to see you get up to six or seven.
I think you can limit whatever you want to as the council, I'll let you know that we actually rejected quite a few items and already put them on the March meeting because of the number of people that were requesting to get on this agenda.
Yep.
But we can't do everything in one night.
I, I think, I, I believe that...
I understand, but you do have...
I, I don't, I, I don't think we can, we can try to, I'm trying to expedient the meetings and cut down the time and try to be conscious of it, but we're doing the people's business here, and there's a lot of people, like, I can't see of anything that we could have caught tonight that we could postpone for a month, and then we end up postponing other things like we did this week. I think it's, it's, it's hard to limit that type of thing. I know it's a long meeting, but these are trying times for everybody, and I think, you know, it's, it's trying to appease all the people in discussions of the people, I don't think we can limit discussion items. We can try to condense them, try to get through them, but I don't think we can limit, because we, like Erica said, we, we postponed some, we got probably two or three right now already on the schedule for next, next week, and for next month, without even, we got a whole month to go, so I think...
I don't think you can limit that.
I don't think we can limit that. We can try to limit the time of, you know, discussion...
Exactly, that's all I wanted.
Presentations are different than discussion items.
Right.
It's complicated, sometimes very complicated, and if we need add them or something, I, I think, like with the marijuana cultivation, there's a lot of issues involved in that, and I think you need to have sometime a lengthy conversation to understand the whole issue so that we can, if we would have limited that for five minutes, we wouldn't have completed a, a forward plan to get that addressed by the next meeting, so I think we can try, but...
Get committees to do that work for us, so when it does come to us, it's streamlined.
You know, what we did last spring, because we were so busy and we had so many issues, is we started having meetings every two weeks.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we're, if we feel that we're just having too much of a lengthy meetings, then, and I don't suggest doing that, because I would rather have another 45 minutes of one meeting than planning another two hours, two hours and a half, getting through other meetings, or having a half-hour meeting to disrupt that type of thing. If, I think we should judge it, and if in the future we feel we need to have two meetings a month again, then that's something we can reconsider again. We did it for around three or four months, and it worked out good, we got the backlog out of the way a lot, and we were able to advance a lot of issues, and sometime, these people have issues, like Marie Street is that, you know, if something comes up, then it's another month. If we would have had meetings every two weeks, then we probably would have resolved some of these long outstanding issues that we could do. Let's keep it out of the month, let's try to keep the agenda the way we can. Erica, any final thoughts on, on things tonight?
I would just say that it seems like maybe since you were, having issues last spring, that maybe this is more of a seasonal fluctuation, that this might be the time of year where we just get more than usual, so, you know, my opinion personally, and I'm not council, so I can't speak for any of you, is that we just kind of have to suck it up sometimes and have a long meeting, but this is not typical, the last two meetings have been unusually long, so I think if we're seeing this happens every time out, then probably we need to look at something else, but I, I think probably what you're seeing is that we have ebbs and flows, just like every other industry does, where you get more activity or less.
Sounds great.
Could get worse.
Well, storytime.
If, I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second, first by Jeff, second by Jerry or Lee. I don't think we need, let's, yeah, let's do a roll call on adjournment, Lisa, if you're still there.
Hi there, I am still here. Ben Twitchell?
He's gone.
He's gone, Jerry Clarion?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Droppo?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
And Ray Heron?
Yes, thank you very much, and we'll all...
And Erica has to stay.